Order. Okay, it's 7:04 and we are going to call this meeting of the New Canaan Bylaws and Ordinances Committee to order. I'm going to quickly call, roll. Tom Butterworth.
Here.
Hillary Ormond here. Kim Norton here. Mark Jimski.
I'm here.
Maria Naughton. Christina Ross. And Rita Batino here. Christina, you're muted, but I see you on the Zoom. Okay, Penny, are you, and Penny's here observing. Yes, thank you. Hi Penny. Happy New Year, everyone. So according to our agenda, we were first going to discuss adoption of a town ordinance forming an affordable housing committee. I assume most of the people here are here for that issue. So I think we're going to switch the two topics and cover the Utilities Commission first and get that out of the way. And then we can dedicate the rest of the meeting to the Affordable Housing Committee. So the second item on the agenda that we're going to cover first and hopefully quickly is to consider amending Chapter 12 of the Town Code with the goal of reviving the Utilities Commission. This has come up quite a bit. It came up with the Board of Selectmen. Kathleen Corbett is here, one of the selectmen. And if I could have put you on the hot seat and ask if you have any comments on the Utilities Commission and the revival of it. We'd love to hear from you. Great.
First of all, thank you. I don't know if it's working, but really want to thank the Town Council and Bylaws and Ordinances Committee to be thinking about this. The Utilities Commission has actually been around for many, many years. I was just looking at the last time this was adopted by the Town Council, it was in 1986. So it's had quite a history, although recently it's not. And we think that given all of the, certainly I think, and I think a number of us agree that given all the important utilities, public utilities, issues that not only have come before the Utilities Commission or the Board of Selectmen, the First Selectmen, we think it even looking forward, it's even more important to consider reestablishment or of the Utilities Commission. I'll say that for the following reasons. In addition to obviously cell tower, and actually Tom Butterworth and I were talking about this earlier, it can run in parallel in terms of the work that's already being done by the Town Council. I commend you for that work that's being done in terms But I also think that when we are able to reestablish the Utilities Commission, we could be, there's things that they can be looking at too at the same time. You're doing the work of the the public comments, etc. But if you think about what the Utilities Commission is, I looked at a couple of others in different towns throughout the state in terms of what are some of their responsibilities. I was just looking at the Wilton one as an example. They're looking at things such as carbon footprint, which is being, you know, every town has got to think about that as well. It's an appropriate thing to do for consideration by a Utilities Commission. Other things such as water, water resources are going to become, you know, unfortunately, more strained and in the future. And so I think it's appropriate for a group like the Utilities Commission to take that into consideration. Also, as we've been talking about is electric utility, electric vehicle charging stations. We do have a committee that does that right now. That can be also folded into Utilities Commission. So there's broad, more broadly than simply, and not to say it's simple, but the cell tower project, which is certainly very important, that I can see a lot of roles and responsibilities continuing on for the Utilities Commission. Tom and I talked briefly, and I'm sure he'll chat about this, but we talked about the existing ordinance that is in place. It has maybe one or two words that are probably no longer appropriate. It's telegraph. And so maybe telecommunications is probably a word switch there in terms of any amendments. But other than that, maybe street railway, other than that, just a few tweaks, I think, can be appropriate. I did look at other towns in terms of their roles and responsibilities of the Utilities Commission, and I think ours is fairly consistent. If not even, you know, I think even better than some of the others. So that's all I have to say. Any questions? Happy to take them.
Thank you. Any questions? Any questions in Zoom?
Hi, this is Christina. I have a question. Kathleen, how many people on the Commission have you seen on average on other towns?
I'm sorry, can you repeat that?
On average, or on the
Are on other towns? I think the one in Wilton, I just saw that quickly. I think that's four. Ours is in the ordinance six. I've been in touch with one of the people still listed of the three that are still listed on our website. And obviously, we want to engage with all three. And we've also encouraged those who have interest to send in their, a letter and a CV to the Board of Selectmen for our review.
Kathleen, can you talk a little bit about how that goes for someone to self nominate themselves? How does that work to a commission?
So if someone's interested, anybody, anybody interested, we usually like to encourage whether you're an R or D to go through your town committees. Each of those organizations, whether the RTC or the DTC have their own nominated committees. They go through a process. I think they're fairly similar in each. So they go through a review and then put forward to the First Selectmen and the full board, any recommendations they have for any boards and commissions. Those who are unaffiliated, also can submit directly to the Board of Selectmen for consideration.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Is that for any commission or committee or just, are you talking about just
I know, for instance, the DTC is pretty religious about making sure if they are aware of an opening, they will make sure that they're out there recruiting as much as they can for anybody interested in a particular position. And then it's put forward.
I meant for you. If you were you, if you were interested in any
Well, if you're you, I would go directly to the Board of Selectmen. Yeah.
Thanks.
Yeah. Anything else?
Question. Is there a mandate for distribution of members among parties and unaffiliateds?
It's that no one party can have more than the majority. So in actually a six person board, no one party can be more than four.
So three, three, and that four, you have a U, yes.
Kevin is disagreeing, but
What do you think? Four, you then said three, three.
It would be four, two, right?
Yeah, it'd be four, two.
Oh, four, yeah.
Sign them up. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Kathleen.
Kevin, do you have any comments? Thank you.
Okay, when I sat in your shoes for four years, I was on the Infrastructure and Utilities Commission. I attended virtually every member meeting of the Utilities Commission along with Sven England, my Democratic colleague, and the actually, the composition of the Utilities Commission had been reformulated, actually, the mission had been reformulated in wording by the then Board of Selectmen, which is not permitted because only you can change the wording of an ordinance. And they set it on a different mission, which when I pointed that out, they went back to the mission. It's in the 1986 ordinance, which, frankly, I mean, you got to read this carefully as to what the mission is. Now, I looked at a bunch of different towns. When I was on, you know, working with Kathleen, actually, we're creating a Ethics Board, we looked at a dozen towns and, you know, had copies of them all. We compared them all. We developed our own. I drafted the first Ethics Board ordinance. And we spent a lot of time on getting it right. The current wording of this mission is way outdated. So I would encourage you to look at other commissions for towns to have them and really decide what this kind of body should do in 2023. As far as the cell towers, the history of cell towers in New Canaan has been that there was always one person tasked by a First Selectman to, you know, to work on service. The Jeff Picard did it under actually Dick Bond and Judy Neville sort of did it themselves, but Jeb Walker had Jeff Picard work on it because he he not only he worked in the telecommunications industry, but he he knew the AT&amp;T brass, and that was helpful. He worked on it for about four years. He was on the Utilities Commission when it was reformulated. And then Tom Teslick, who was retired Leaver Brothers Investment Banker, had done cell financing in Europe. He came forward as the then cell czar for the next five years. He, he would report to the Utilities Commission, no other member of the Utilities Commission do anything about cell service. So it was kind of a one man operation, but he did a great job. He spent five years developing a plan, which was adopted by the Board of Selectmen in August of 2016. And so, you know, historically, one person with some expertise has bird dogged the cell service issue. And I, if there's a person in town like that, I've been doing it for the last five years because I became sort of an expert watching Tom Teslick, talking to Tom Teslick, talking to the carriers, Bill Walbert, Chairman of the Town Council, and I met frequently, met several times with lawyers who represent AT&amp;T and Verizon and and met with the tower companies. So we spent a lot of time, I believe that, you know, it used to take 10 to 15 years to get a cell tower developed. We got the Richie Cell Tower constructed in five years from the time the lease was signed. The Citing Council last month approved the Northwest Tower in a record time of 18 months from the time a lease was signed. So I believe my, my work in becoming expert in this area helped accelerate this process. And, and we're following the plan that was adopted by this town in August 2016 to improve cell service in the areas of town that have either non-existent cell service or very unreliable cell service. The western side of town was identified as a part of town. I've gotten emails and people, I know people, a lot of people who have no cell service because of the valleys and stuff. And that has to be remedied as a long term solution. So as far as the Utilities Commission, I would encourage you to do your work, as I did it when I was on your body and, you know, look at other towns, see what they do. They don't do anything near what this document from 1986 says. And and also, I should say, the town officers, Tiger Man, myself, Tucker Murphy is the administrative officer, are in constant contact with the utilities. We fight with them constantly. It's something that volunteers meeting once a month cannot do very well. We don't always get great results. Eversource did not perform well on Christmas Eve in terms of servicing our town. Aquarium Water Company has been a pain in our neck with digging up our roads and not repairing them well. We work with Frontier, who was a, not a very effective company. You have to deal with the utilities you're given. We don't get to choose to have another utility come in. Eversource Gas did a great job in investing over $30 million in town. But anyway, the staff is constantly in contact with the utilities. It's hard for volunteers to do that, meeting once a month. My view. So that's my views, and I'd be happy to spend more time with you on the subject.
Can I ask a quick question? The work that was done, and I don't mean, I just want to say at the outset that I don't think that this exercise should be any sort of referendum or anything on the work that you've done, which I think has been Herculean and really good. So I just want to say that at the outset. The work that Tom Teslick and his predecessor did on the cell tower issue, was that done under the current wording of the ordinance, which is the 1986 language? Or was that done under the revised language that we have then decided was not appropriate because the Board of Selectmen drafted?
The Board of Selectmen set them on a mission of solar.
Yeah.
Natural gas. Telecommunications or cell service. And I'm not sure there's, but they basically took what was written here and rewrote it into a different mission.
But my question is, if the ordinance as written now was sufficient for them to write the plan in 2016 that we're currently operating under, why is the language of the
Again, I'm just pointing out that, you know, as a lawyer,
Yeah.
I would never have, as a selectman, rewritten an ordinance without coming to you and say, I want to rewrite your ordinance.
Agreed.
You know, I don't have that authority.
No, I agree. And that's not, that's not the point I'm making. The point is, did they have the authority? Did Tom Teslick and the Utilities Commission, when they were writing the 2016 plan for cell towers, which we're now operating under?
Right.
Did they have authority to do that under the ordinance that appears on our webpage today? That was written in 1986? Because my question is, do we need to go through the exercise of rewriting the ordinance to reconstitute this? Can we do it with just a few tweaks that Kathleen has?
I think, I think this, this mission is very outdated. So if you want to, if you want to, you know, Kathleen suggests changing one word.
Two words, at least.
Two words.
Or three, because street
But honestly, this mission was maybe appropriate for the time. What I'm suggesting, read the ordinance.
No, I have.
It talks about taking complaints from citizens and, you know, representing them to boards, to utilities. That was perhaps never done. I'm not sure it was done in the 80s or 90s or, right? But the reality is that's what this says. That's not a very effective mission because that can't be done very effectively. Again, we as staff fight with the utilities all the time on behalf of our residents. I don't, I don't think volunteers working, meeting once a month could really accomplish much in that space.
Okay.
But they can certainly take the complaints, not necessarily field them, but they could certainly be an avenue for recording.
Our job, our job is to, is to deal with complaints and, and try to, you know, again, Tiger Man, we only get what we, what we need by having great relationships with them, and we try to maintain great relationships. But even so, they constantly disappoint us. Constantly disappoint us.
It would be helpful to me, and I will call you and make an appointment to sit down, and we can maybe talk about what you find super outdated. Because I think some of the core parts of the mission are still valid and good that we, if we choose to.
Yeah. I would also mention, Kathleen mentioned, for example, carbon footprint.
Yeah.
And water. We have a very effective conservation commission, which is, you know, is appropriate for those subjects. They, they, they've been working on water. Look at what they're doing. And so, you know, let's look at what kind of mission we want different boards and commissions to have. This, you know, water is something Conservation Commission is uniquely chartered to work on, so.
I have a question. Besides the mission that you think needs to be updated, as well as the complaint piece, is there anything else that you think should be taken out?
Well, honestly, again, my, my view is having, having worked with a board who is chartered to go off and do something different than this says. I'm not opposed to the idea of, you know, identifying new topics that something should do. But as far as utilities, look at other towns. I don't think you'll, you'll find other towns that try to do these things.
No, I understand that.
Just, it's not, it's much more important to have full time employees doing it on you, on the town's behalf and have relationships that, that are effective. I don't think you replace that with volunteers.
So rather than replace, I mean, could there, could there also be a role to help? Because some of the stuff, to what Hillary was saying, like you're doing a lot of work.
Tucker come and, and, you know, have you understand that better as to whether that, you know, quite honestly, having seen it, I would also talk to the three members of the Utilities
I mean, there were five pieces of information that we've requested, and that's a lot of pieces of information to get just for cell towers. I would imagine that this group could help, maybe take that on. That's something, I mean, it would be maybe not instead of, but to help with. I think that might be maybe something to consider.
Sure. Well, again, you, I would not rewrite an ordinance of yours. That's what the prior Board of Selectmen did.
Yeah.
They did some effective work. I, you know, I applauded everything Tom Teslick did, except his pace was very slow. Took five years to get there.
Right.
And then we didn't build a cell tower in five years.
Right.
So.
And I think, and we're going to take questions from Zoom if there are any, but I think one thing I'm concerned about is I don't want to add a layer of bureaucracy where one is not needed. So it's important that we work together and make sure we're not just doing something purely for optics, that it's, that it's actually something that is workable and that makes sense and where we're not, you know, reinventing the wheel or something, or, or being doubling up on efforts where if we have a conservation commission that looks at this or that. So I would like to sit down and see where we feel like this might be outdated or if the current mission
And look at other towns.
And if we need it.
I mean, look, look at other towns, not just Wilton. Look at other towns. Most of the, what we saw didn't have much relevance to what, what this says or to what our needs are today. So.
But I think hearing from both of you is helpful. Sorry. Can we get a copy of the amended ordinance? Not the one that's on the website, but the one that was rewritten by the last selectman? You said there's another ordinance that was rewritten? Are you talking about the one that's
They had that up on their website.
The one, number 12 on the Town Code.
Had the revised one, and then they shook it down and went back to what's on, even, they went back to what's the words from the ordinance, which was what they
Wait a minute, I'm confused. So there's the one on the website.
2013.
Yeah.
The Board of Selectmen, I believe it was January, February 2013, they, they came up with a new mission for the, the Utilities Commission.
So what's on the website now?
You know, if they had described it as we are cremating a Board of Selectmen Committee, which they're allowed to do.
Right.
Right? It just wasn't the Utilities Commission that you had an ordinance on the books for. And then when I pointed out to them that they weren't following the ordinance that was adopted, they changed the words on the website to be the 1986 ordinance. Again, I'm just saying that you really, on the one hand, have to follow an ordinance if you want an ordinance board.
Sure.
I'm confused. Where do I get a copy? I see Chapter 12 Utilities Commission, and you have a different document?
This is 1986.
Okay, so what are you, where do we get a copy of another version of what you said?
It was on the website from 2013 to like 2016.
And it's no longer there.
And then when they realized, I just pointed out to them, you know, you're not allowed to change your mission unless you go to the Town Council for
Then they changed it back.
So they changed it back to
Okay, so we don't have a copy of the 2013, 2016.
But, you know, it's on the website. If someone, the old website is gone.
Yeah.
If anybody has a copy of who put it up there.
Okay, that I'd be interested in seeing, just to see they wanted a different direct
I don't, I don't know where you'd find that. We could, we could search for it.
Thank you.
Do we have any questions on Zoom for Mr. Monahan?
Thank you. Okay, just, just one comment before you go, Kevin. I know that we talked about the day to day. I think that the ordinance and the Utilities Commission would be existing to look more big picture stuff. I don't, I don't picture them taking, taking, taking the phone calls like Tucker and Tiger and all that.
You know, that's not
Right. So that, I just want to make that clear.
I'm just saying, if you're going to change it.
Right.
Changes to be effective today.
Right.
And not something that's kind of really outdated. And I, I'm saying this was outdated and not very effective. We couldn't, we, we, this would not be effective today. Don't do something that's not effective.
Right. Fair enough.
We'll definitely get your input, for sure.
Kathleen had one more comment.
Yeah, just one follow up on that. So when you think about all of our boards and commissions, you know, they're not doing day to day stuff. But most, most of them, maybe with the exception of the Board of Education, are meeting once a month. So like the Utilities Commission, Board of Finance, Conservation Commission, etc. We're overseeing the activities and operations of the wonderful people that do it every day in Town Hall. So there's a real separation of duties, if you will, whereas the boards and commissions are in an oversight role. They hear complaints from the public or whatever, if we're not doing it in a, in a way that they're hoping for us to do. That's what, there's two different roles here. So it's not replacing the great work that Tucker and Tiger and others are doing. It's more of an oversight role and getting work done if, if it's not being done.
Yeah. And, and I also think, I think there's also a role of maybe communicating with the public, like that.
Absolutely.
And being able to bring in and having public meetings and sort of incorporating that.
Yeah.
And I think that's sort of missing now, too.
Yeah, absolutely. Great. Thanks. Thank you, Kathleen. Okay, last call for Zoom comments on the potential amendment to the Utilities Commission ordinance.
I just want to thank Kevin and Kathleen. That was very informative. Kevin, thank you for your insights.
Thank you both.
No one has raised their hand.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so we'll move on to what was previously the first item on the agenda is now the second item on the agenda, which I don't have in front of me anymore.
All right, I'll pull it up.
Sorry. Which is the potential, here we go. Consideration of adoption of a town ordinance forming an affordable housing committee. Do we have anyone who would like to speak from the public on this issue?
Jacomo? I don't know. I saw him raise his hand first.
Is it this mic here? Jacomo is probably, that's
Yeah, I think this is
It's a little long, so excuse me. Jacomo Landy, 313 Elm Street. I actually don't know where you guys are going with this, so just take it as a general piece of feedback for whatever it's worth. I applaud the town for expanding its work in the affordable housing area. Few questions I think should be well understood and defined before a committee is formed. Number one is what's the scope, deliverable and responsibilities of such a committee? Affordable housing is a large subject matter. What's the specific scope, expected deliverable timeline on, on the deliverable and legal responsibility of this committee? Does this committee live in perpetuity or is it created for a set period of time? Number two is, what's the relationship with existing town committees? The town has existing committees that are addressing or at least touching this area. How will this committee contribute to the existing process without overlapping or competing with other committees? Has the town mapped the various existing committee responsibilities to minimize any bureaucratic conflicts while ensuring existing responsibilities get completed? Number three is composition. How many people? How are they nominated and who will chair the committee? Four conflicts. How will conflicts, both perceived and otherwise, be managed? Five, public access. How do we ensure all work done by this committee is open to the public, accessible and transparent? So those are just sort of general things if I were you, I would think about. Then some personal comments, since I've
Thank you so much.
Boy, that app grew on Mike's mind.
Think that is positive. So these are personal comments, just because I've, I've followed this issue at least for a while. We need to think about how the, how this is incorporated with the POCD. My view is that any work Affordable Housing Committee does should flow seamlessly and be incorporated in the POCD. That's basically up for renewal shortly. And any work that the, this committee does should essentially update the existing affordable housing plan. To do this will require good coordination and collaboration with the POCD process. A second one is affordable housing is a very important subject, but it's also a minefield for strong political views, as well as an area with significant personal financial assets at stake. This is a case for individual residents through homeownership or renting, or perhaps their job, like being real estate brokers, as well as non-resident individuals, corporations or nonprofits who invest in New Canaan real estate. These inherent biases dictate full transparency is required. I.e., we should question whether executive session should be allowed for this committee. And we should ensure the equity is surround, equity in a broad context surrounds the process to minimize public distrust and enhance genuine public support, as much public support as possible for any recommendations. Three, or C, we need a cross section of New Canaan residents working on this. The committee needs to fully represent the residents of New Canaan. We should endeavor to have residents from what I call all four corners of town and as much demographic and economic differences as possible. Affordable housing is an issue for the entire town, not just one part of town. We should seek some Newtown volunteers to join such a committee to allow as fresh a look as possible. Of D, or four, we should seek outside inputs and case studies. We should seek as much state, regional, national and international case studies as possible. What's going on in other places with regards to making communities more affordable is highly dynamic, architecturally and socially interesting and relevant for New Canaan. We should seek to learn from those excellent examples to make sure New Canaan develops in a way that residents would like and expect from a town such as New Canaan. There's a lot of really good material about affordable housing domestically and internationally. Next is make sure the committee runs the process. I, as on other issues, I'm skeptical of hiring an affordable housing expert to run the process. The process, the agenda and the output should be run by the committee, which represents the residents of New Canaan to avoid any hijacking of such a process. Experts, of course, should be considered to cover any specific knowledge gaps, like technical issues, legal issues, economic issues or communication issues with the community. Perhaps a budget for hiring such experts should be discussed. For example, can COVID funds be used? I think you can allocate COVID funds actually to affordable housing issues. The next point, be specific with regards to investments that the town needs to make. The town needs to be transparent with the residents about where there's genuine capacity on existing services and where there is not. We've previously been advised on constraints with regards to sewer, and we've recently been advised on constraints with regards to the school system. Those constraints need to be transparently presented and described in detail, so all residents understand the existing situation. What is causing the issues and what investments need to be made in advance to overcome them need to be brought forward for public discussion. This should be a forward looking view, for example, on power. Where are we on electrified cars? For example, what percent of our fleet is electrified today? And what happens based on various, various growth scenarios? So if you put power consumption essentially over the next 10 years, what does that do to power as an example? We can do the same on sewer and water and schools. We also need to map out the baseline demand growth on utilities, including schools, based on natural upsizing of existing homes through demolition and rebuilds, which is constant and an accelerating trend. You can see that. I've shown that. Basically, the older homes, which are smaller, like three bedrooms, they're being taken down and five and six bedroom houses are being put up on the same lots, which is increasing utility demand, and that will continue. You can just map that out, and we should understand what that baseline demand is. Be, and my next point is be comprehensive on the issue. We can talk about 830G and where the town stands based on existing legal definitions. But more importantly, highlight areas where the town is existing and can create new, what I call genuine affordable options, even if they're not so defined by 830G. But more importantly, highlight areas where the town is existing and can create new, what I call genuine affordable options, even if they're not so defined by eight thirty G. The town in New Canaan has a good deal of land already that's suitable for redevelopment, redevelopment in multiple parts of the town. Doing smaller scale projects in various locations could be very appropriate as we try to incorporate new structures that will fit in well with the existing character and infrastructure of New Canaan. This also generates a higher use than present for those municipal properties. At the same time, we should look at new buildings. We must also look at options for supporting our existing housing stock. Which is more genuinely affordable in its present form than any tear down and redevelopment of substructures would be. Not least of which is it already exists. So we're talking about an issue now that, that, that stuff is there. On a macro level, I took a quick look at the grand list from two thousand eight and compared it with the grand list for two thousand twenty one. Uh, short version, my, by my estimates, the town's grown by about a thousand people, but our total, uh, value of, um, property has gone down by a couple hundred million. Uh, over thirteen years. So basically we've had no growth or negative growth, uh, in asset values and you can compare it based on cars or commercial and residential. But it's been a tough slog. So, and if you look at the town budget over that period of time, it certainly hasn't maintained a, a stability, uh, for that. So my point on bringing that up is be careful about extrapolating very recent real estate transactions or demographic trends and assume that they will continue forever. There's a reason suburbs have become popular recently. It's COVID. It's the millennials moving en masse to an age of high family creation. New Canaan has, and its residents need to chart its own course to make genuinely and sustainably affordable and desirable place to live. And last one is good luck.
Thank you, Jacomo. Thank you.
Sorry. I feel like I'm far enough away from people right now. Um, so I'm Krista Nielsen. I'm the Secretary of the Planning and Zoning Commission and also was a member of the eight thirty J. Affordable Housing Committee that worked on our affordable housing plan that was submitted as a annex to West Cog's Affordable Regional Affordable Housing Plan last June. Um, and so I'm here to kind of speak in that capacity. Last May, when we were putting the plan together, let's first off be honest, it was done pretty quickly in a rush without any resources. Um, so we acknowledged that it was really the beginning and not the end of a process to start a community conversation about affordable housing in this town and where we should go policy wise in the future. And I would even categorize the plan as almost like a laundry list, a wishlist, a sketch of ideas that need a lot more fleshing out. Um, and so the thought was, okay, who's going to do that, right? Like, we've got to turn this thing in. We're under a deadline, but from here on out. Somebody needs to be doing the hard work. Simultaneous to that, as you guys all know, um, the town at that point had one eight, what I would call hostile eight thirty G application and subsequently received two more. Um, and so that has both enraged and engaged the residents of our town, um, in a way that I think we should really use, you know, use that energy in a positive way. Um, and so, you know, I think this is a great moment to really think about formulating something that can go forward and provide, um, policy for affordable housing. Um, so in terms of what I think this committee could do or should do based on kind of where we left off with the eight thirty J process. Um, the first is take ownership of the responsibilities delegated, um, under eight thirty J. Eight thirty J is pretty. High level. It just says you have to do an affordable housing plan every five years. It doesn't really give a whole lot of meat to what that looks like. Um, and so at the very least, I would see the commit, the committee taking on the existing plan and fleshing that out further. Um, and then every five years being the body that's responsible for crafting a new plan. To Jacomo's point, I fully agree that this, any plans need to be integrated with the P O C D. And so there would have to be, you know, communication there to make sure the two things flow, but I think an affordable housing plan will be much more specific. It's almost maybe a chapter of the P O C D or a, an appendix to the P O C D. Um, and then the last piece I will say about taking ownership of the responsibilities in eight thirty J is that assuming moratoriums continue to play an important part in our affordable housing policy in town, which I suspect they will. Um, I would like to see this committee take responsibility for making sure that we're tracking. Those units, um, and that we're ready to go when the time comes and that we've got, you know, either staff in house or on the committee that knows how to put the moratorium together because. I can also say I worked with Lynn and the consultant on getting that done last year ago, December. Um, and it's no small feat. I mean, it was a seven hundred and fifty page document by the time it was done and a lot of it's photocopying stuff and getting stuff from the town clerk. It's not necessarily hard work, but it is work. Um, and there needs to be a group, I think, that holds that responsibility. Um, the second piece I would like to see the committee take on is figuring out funding mechanisms for affordable housing, inclusive of managing our existing affordable housing trust fund. Um, we have the trust fund, as you know, it's a, a tax on building permits. Um, and. You know, I don't exactly know how that's managed. It's sometimes hard to get your finger on exactly how much money is in there. It's predominantly been used by our housing authority for the projects they've done and actually under our last rewrite of section seven point six of the zoning ordinance, it can only be used by the housing authority right now. Um, but I think this committee could look at additional revenue streams beyond just a tax on the building permit, whether it's a demolition fee. A fee on, um, people enlarging three bedroom houses to five bedroom houses, as Jacomo pointed out. Um, and then also if we decide in the future to open up the Affordable Housing Trust Fund to give grants or loans to private developers, we would need a body. And I'm thinking this committee that would, um, evaluate those requests and determine who gets the money and how much and all of that because it. Should be a very public and transparent process if we're using public money. Um, and then I think there's probably also funding both statewide and nationally. I mean, I'm aware of the low income housing tax credits. I know there's probably other stuff and so to have a group that really. Is familiar with all the different funding mechanisms and, and knows them so they can figure out how to best utilize the town's assets. Um, I think that would be great. Um, the third role I would see is, and this is probably kind of minor, but perhaps recruiting additional partners to round out our affordable housing toolbox. Right now we have obviously the town government. We have the housing authority, which has done an amazing job. In most places that I've lived and worked and for those that don't know, I've worked in municipal government and urban planning for my career. Um, you have a third leg of that stool and that's a nonprofit arm and that can either be in the form of land banking. Buying land in anticipation of either building or maintaining the existing housing stock is affordable. Or nonprofit management of the units once they're built, um, because that's also obviously a long term task to make sure that you've got somebody who's managing these affordable units once their deed restricted in perpetuity. Um, and then the final piece I would see this committee doing is perhaps, um, interfacing with the state legislature in terms of changes to eight thirty G. New legislation, every term, it seems like every session, it seems like there's new stuff getting put on the table. And so. To have a group that's really familiar with what is working in New Canaan, what New Canaan needs, what needs to be changed and could lobby on our behalf at the state level, I think that would also be super helpful. Um, so the last two things I wanted to mention is membership of the committee. I mean, I, I don't have strong opinions on this, but if you ask me point blank, I would say probably members of town council. Board of Selectmen, Planning and Zoning, Board of Finance, the Housing Authority. And, and citizens, as Jacomo mentioned, because I think those are the groups that really need to come together to create a cohesive policy. Um, and then the last piece I'll point out, uh, Jacomo touched on this as well, is I think this committee will need some resources. It will need a budget to hire consultants. Um, you know, part of the reason the eight thirty J plan that we submitted was a little light was that we didn't have that budget and didn't have the time to really do the hard work of. You know, where, where is existing affordable housing stock in New Canaan, where is naturally occurring affordable housing stock? We didn't have that type of. Uh, manpower frankly, and so that I think there does need to be a budget to help support, um, some consultants to help the committee. And I think obviously there'll also need to be a staff liaison. Um, we recently lost the assistant planner in the planning department. Um, he went to HUD, but. He was hired because he had a background in affordable housing and we were hoping that he could really help man that ship, handle the moratorium piece. Handle the tracking of units. And so, um, you know, I, I would think the planning department's a good place to start, but I'm open to other options as well. So that's all I have for you.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you. That was very helpful.
Wow.
Thank you.
Actually, I wonder if we could ask. If, if we could ask Krista to come back and, and, uh, I have a few questions.
Sure. Sorry, Scott.
All right. Krista, so there would be this committee and we have planning and zoning that has members and a staff, well. Pl- has a relationship with the planning staff. Um, so take you for example, would you? Would you sit in both planning and zoning and this committee and? Uh, how would you see the, uh, the investment of your time allocated between those two? If, if you did, if, if you, if you did join the, the, the committee.
He already signed you up, Krista. He signed you up already, so.
How would you handle, how would, if, if it were you, how would you handle that?
Um, so I mean, to me, it's, it's two halves of the same coin, right? Like there's the setting, the policy piece, which is what I see the Affordable Housing Committee doing. Figuring out the bigger picture of what New Canaan's plan for affordable housing is. That's the Affordable Housing Committee we're here to talk about tonight. And then the planning and zoning piece is the actual. Part of the implementation of that when it projects comes specifically to planning and zoning. And so I think. If it were me or if it were someone else, yes, you need people that kind of can carry, can wear both hats because, um. You know, it's important that the Planning and Zoning Commission understand what the bigger policy is so that when we have projects come to us, we can say. Hey, this works with what we're trying to accomplish over here in this other group or no, this is completely contrary. And so you need. You need that kind of crossover. And I think we need it, like I said, in a couple of ways. I mean, with finance, the Board of Finance, we need. People who understand the town's financial situation where we have money or we don't have money and how we could help finance projects. Does that help?
Yeah, yeah, thank you. I noticed in the report that, um. There's, there were some recommendations related to eight thirty G, but others to a broader, as Jacomo was advocating, a broader role. So, for instance, on senior housing and workforce housing. You feel strongly that this committee should, should have a scope that encompasses all of those.
I do. I, I mean, and honestly, I thought about suggesting that maybe the committee is called something like housing diversity or, or something like that because I think affordable housing is one piece. Of what we're attempting, what I'm hoping we're attempting to do in New Canaan, which is to provide housing for everybody. So, um, you know, there is what's mandated under eight thirty. G, which is a pretty limited scope of people who make below eighty percent of S M I. Um, but then I think there's a huge missing gap of people who make eighty percent of S M I to two hundred and twenty six percent of S M I, which is basically our market rate. And so I would call that middle income housing that's not going to get state or federal, uh, subsidies, but it's an important, important piece of the puzzle. So, um. Yeah, I, I think it's bigger than just the affordable component. I think it's. Looking at all of the housing and making sure that people who want to live in this town have a place that they can live.
I guess lastly, I would ask, uh, and you, you know, probably better than anybody how complex it is to. Succeed under eight thirty G with a moratorium strategy. Very difficult, right? I guess one concern I have is, is, um, it's so difficult that do we want to, does it make sense to, um. Shoot. You know, to, to have too broad a scope to where we water down our ability to hit what might be the most important target that we want to hit.
Yeah, I think that's, um, you know, that's a question that I think we all need to grapple with. In my opinion. If the town only focuses on eight thirty G, we're missing the bigger picture. We're missing the forest through the trees. But that is the tree that has the stick attached to it and it's going to come back and bite us. So we can't ignore it, right? But I think if we would truly care about housing diversity in this town, it's much more than just what eight thirty G is asking us to do. It's, it's a bigger picture. So. You know, I, I could see either approach working. I mean, philosophically, I'd like to see the bigger picture, but if, if we just focus on eight thirty G, I think. You know, we're, we're in a pretty deep hole. I think we need to dig ourselves out of so that there's nothing wrong with doing that either.
Have you thought, lastly, leave you alone, have you thought about, uh, getting public input through surveys and things as to what the public in general might prioritize?
Yeah, so if we had had more time in the spring, one of the things we talked about was doing some sort of, we did have to do a community meeting. Um, it wasn't. You know, the most useful community meeting that I've ever attended, but we also talked about doing a survey. I could see doing something like a charrette. Where you have people come and give them like the colored dots and kind of put all the different options from the plan, suggestions from the plan on the wall and see. Where the community wants to head in terms of which things to move on, um, next. Um, and, and so, yeah, I, I suggested that as the eight thirty J. Committee left off the plan and the next group picks it up, that there needs to be this sort of handoff where the community gets involved and tells. The future Affordable Housing Committee, um, you know, here's, here's where we want you to work first. Like there was. I don't remember fifteen ideas or suggestions in that eight thirty J plan, but numbers one, two and three were the most important to us. So focus your efforts there. Um, and get some feedback that way. So, yeah, I think that's an important, important piece going forward.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Before you leave, Krista, does anybody else have any questions for Ms. Nielsen while she's here?
Thank you. That was incredibly helpful.
Thanks, Krista.
Wait a minute. No, just kidding.
We'll get more. Uh, hi, Scott Hobbs from West Road, uh, in New Canaan, forty eight West Road in New Canaan, and I'm chairman of the Housing Authority of New Canaan. Um, this will be somewhat disjointed and apologies, just there's a whole lot of thoughts and something I've spent a lot of time on. A huge, there, there's so many people that have goodwill and have great intentions inside of the affordable housing, you know, pursuit. I mean, everyone would like to make it so that people have a great place to live at an affordable rate and, you know, who would not want that? There's a game the state plays where the state, you know, of course, anytime you have laws, you have to define what affordable housing is. And the state defines it very, very narrowly. And then the federal government defines it very, very narrowly. And then you have fair housing laws and you have all of these other rules and regulations. That what we as a community think would actually be very helpful and good is literally illegal. I mean, we're not allowed to do it. We can't just say we're going to help New Canaan residents. We're going to, you know, provide subsidies to these people and then they can't go ahead and just take in pocket the subsidy. No, they get to, if you. If we had an affordable unit that somebody bought, they get to go, again, you can limit this for twenty years, but then they get to sell it and take the profit and move on. It just creates a whole, there's a whole bunch of issues that come up under economics. In, and, and that's really what affordable housing is, is kind of saying, how much will one group, how much is one group willing to pay? To subsidize the, for the living of another group. And that becomes a math equation. So there is no magic way to build housing that's more affordable than what's out there. Uh, construction is a really efficient business and it's cutthroat and typically at least one developer has to go broke before somebody can make money. And, you know, again, there's occasional times when you hit the exact right home run. Most of the time it's two or three people go broke before somebody makes money. So under like the dollars involved, because of affordable housing rules, your rent is limited. And using very rough numbers, because there's no real way to figure out exactly what it costs in order to maintain the unit, pay for a unit, all the upkeep and what exactly each unit, you know, person can go ahead and, um, pay. But each unit can generate maybe twelve to fifteen thousand dollars a year in, in income. At three, at three percent borrowing, that twelve thousand dollars supports a three hundred and twenty thousand dollar equity. At six percent borrowing, it supports two hundred thousand in equity. To build an affordable unit costs five hundred thousand dollars before land. So that leaves a huge gap of a hundred and eighty to three hundred thousand dollars per unit before land. So this is if you had free land, we've got to come up with these sort of numbers. In New Canaan, to get to our ten percent affordable housing requirement for the state, which they consider to be so great, we need another five hundred some odd units. And five hundred units at two hundred and fifty thousand dollars per unit gets you to a hundred and twenty five million dollars over the next twenty years. And if you toss in, let's say fifty percent of that for land, which is probably pretty good in New Canaan. You know, we're getting to, you know, call it roughly twenty million dollars over the next twenty years. So about ten million dollars a year for us in order to hit the eight thirty G goals. That's a pretty darn big lift. And just to add to that, of course, the state considers us to be a rich community, so we have very limited access to federal and state funds in order to help us do this. And for other frame of reference, I believe the Affordable Housing Trust Fund has gotten somewhere in the neighborhood of maybe three million dollars over the last twenty years. So we're somewhere around a hundred and ninety seven million dollars short on what we need in order to reach what the state goals are. As we know, 830G is a, just it's a bazooka. I mean, and again, it defines, it's going to help a tiny little sliver of people. And that's all that is going to end up helping. And we've had 15 years in now under Millport redevelopment and Canaan Parish, which thank goodness that way before the town had actually gone ahead and built Millport. And New Canaan neighbors had gone ahead and built Canaan Parish. So we actually had something to work with. But, you know, it's been a 12, 13, actually about a 14 year lift in order to go ahead and get those to where they are. And Canaan Parish is different because it has a bunch of section eight housing vouchers, which allows it to be marketed, which supports a lot, a lot more equity. Uh, sorry, a lot more, uh, building for, uh, for per unit. You can afford to do more things. Millport is really kind of touch and go. And, you know, when things go wrong at Millport, we actually have to backfill it. Otherwise it's not a viable project. Now luckily we have it at a point where it is very viable and we've stabilized and we're in a pretty good spot. But over 20 years, something bad is going to happen and we'll probably have to backstop that again. Canaan Parish should be fully funded for, for the whole time. As we look forward to like next projects, and this getting back to the ordinance for a moment. So question is, so what does the Affordable Housing Commission, you know, commission do? If we're doing real estate transactions, real estate transactions are not conducive to public, you know, to a lot of public discussion. They're not conducive to committees. Properties come up, you need that quickly, you need to have financing in place, you need to have actually pre-planned, you need to have some stuff ready to go. And it better be done pretty well in secret. And luckily we're allowed, I believe under town rules and FOIA stuff, real estate transactions can be done in secret, but only to a limited extent. And the more people involved, the, the harder it is. So, I mean, if you just imagine that, um, let's say, um, let's say Arnold Karp said, I'm going to sell you Hill, the Hill Street Development for a dollar. And you're sitting there going, oh, oh, wait a minute, now what do we do? And so do we actually go ahead and say the town is going to buy it, housing authority is going to buy it, we're going to develop it? How does the housing authority then deal with, you know, the neighbors, you know, are we going to put in, try for the 100 units? Do you try for 40? Is 40 acceptable if you live right next door? I don't want to be in that position. Maybe an affordable housing commission could actually be in that position of, you know, helping to gather the funds necessary. Cause by the way, we're not going to get it for a dollar. You know, the, we, somebody has to gather the funds in order to have, be ready to do developments. And we also have to gather the public opinion and galvanize the public as to what do we want to do? Cause if everyone wants to say that we're going to actually pursue an 830G strategy to conclusion. You know, we're going to have to do five, you know, maybe, you know, call it five Canaan parishes or, you know, maybe end up doing six, seven of something a little bit smaller than that. And that's a lot of work. And you have to do bigger type units because it takes about as much time and effort and legal fees and development costs to do something like Canaan Parish as it does to do a 15 or 20 unit development. So the unit price at that 500,000 per unit goes way up if you start getting down into 10 or 15 unit developments. So who, how do we manage this process? I don't know exactly how much we can manage. And by the way, if we're going for 830G, that's all we're managing because there's nothing else really we can be doing. I'm, I am confused as to how much, um, you know, if we get into, uh, market rate, you know, market rate development that'll allow for affordable housing inside of it or requires affordable housing. I mean, is that planning and zoning or is it housing, you know, housing commission? Or is it both combined and who rules under what's going to happen? As we try to define other housing, again, who I have, I confused as to how those, those will come together. And then I'm confused as the interaction with, uh, with, um, housing authority itself. And as far as like, should we, I don't even know if we should be running everything or doing all the development. Is there other places and other people who can be doing stuff? And then how do you do it in a way that makes any sort of sense? Given that we're doing a bunch of real estate transactions that are really going to affect the people of the town. I mean, I had a nightmare talk with the guy over in Greenwich who, you know, pointed out the fact that again, in order to follow an 830G path, somebody has to be the evil developer. And if it's town run, then that's somebody is in the town and it is the town people. And I personally feel very uncomfortable. I love living in New Canaan. I like having people not swear at me when I walk down the street. You know, I like, I, I, I put in a lot of effort for the town and community. And I have no illusions that if, if we were to do two or three ill, you know, I'll say ill-placed developments, which by the way, if you're the neighbor, it's ill-placed. I mean, I, I think we can all agree that, that somebody wants to go take down to your neighbor who's a duplex or a single family home and put up a five-story, 100-unit development. Somebody's getting screwed. And we have to decide as a community, how do we deal with that? And are we willing to deal with that? And are we willing to go ahead and tell some of our citizens that, you know, you lost, sorry? But that should not be the responsibility of one person. Maybe again, a housing commission could actually go ahead and help to fill that role and lead, you know, the, the effort to do that. I don't know. The other part is that, and perhaps a housing commission could also help having some sort of a lobbying role, which again, it might be overlap with this first selectmen's office and town council and everything else. I'm not positive everyone understands why we don't have a moratorium in place right now. And this gets into again, the, the problems with the affordable housing world. First off, we needed to go ahead and get funding from the state and approval from the state. And the state went ahead and shut down with a budget moratorium and said, we're not dealing with any of this for a while. So we lost a year. And then COVID hit. Oh, so we can't do anything for another year. So finally we go ahead and the COVID opens up, we get a little bit of the, of tax credit funding. FHA actually underwrites the loan. We even bypassed the state because the state couldn't provide the same terms. We go ahead and we do our first development. It's a 650-page application for the 830G. And that falls on the town planner, who again was stretched and, and put over, but like 650 pages. Why is it 650 pages? I mean, are you kidding me? What are we, this is idiotic, it's stupid, but that's what's required. So we submit it. We get rejected because they want to penalize us for the units that we tore down in order to put up the new units. However, the units we tore down are not, were not qualified under the old rules as affordable, under new rules as affordable housing. So they wanted to say that you knock down something that we don't count as affordable housing, so we'll count that against you, even though you put up what was affordable housing. So we appealed that and they ended up saying, oh, actually you're right. But now what we end up saying is that inside of the 830G rule, they clarify that you can count points toward the moratorium up until, um, you know, to get a moratorium. And then they also state, and they clarified that if you have a moratorium in place and you get more points, you can count those. They're interpreting that to say that any points in excess of what you need for a moratorium until you get a moratorium, don't count. So in other words, we ended up, we brought on 40 units when we only needed to bring on 15 because the development required us to do, you know, we're doing 40 units. I mean, that's what you have to do to make it work. They wanted us to literally only bring on 15, not bring on another 25 if we wanted the points for it. And none of this makes any sense. And the law does not prohibit, the law does not say that you can't count those points. But it doesn't specifically say that you have to count those points. And that's why they're sighing that we don't have the moratorium.
And they're saying you can't carry it over to the next moratorium.
They're saying that.
Like you have to use it here or not. You're going to lose it, use it now or lose it. And if you don't need it now, it's sorry, you lose it.
Meanwhile, they've issued other moratoriums that, that did not have the stipulation. When we actually went ahead and did the, uh, the ribbon cutting for Millport.
Right.
Lo and behold, we had all of the state delegates down there. We talked about our strategy, we stated our strategy, we say, this is what we're doing. They all came up and complimented us. Not one person said, oh, by the way, you can't count those surplus points.
Well, it's silly. Why would you, and why would anybody tell you, you have to have exactly 15 and we don't want you to build more? If the goal is to have more affordable housing.
It's a complete betrayal of the whole system. And hopefully we'll be able to go ahead and win under that appeal and/or the legislators will recognize that this is a flaw that actually disincentivizes people from doing it. Um, and again, I don't think that a commission necessarily has a role in, in helping in that. But again, it's possibility of some sort of authority in order to help, you know, change state stuff or interface with WestCog, um, and overall items.
And it could also just look, not that I, again, I'm sort of contradicting myself about an optics thing. But I think efforts that we are making as a town to show that we're serious about providing affordable housing look good to Hartford, you know, that we're not just digging in our heels and saying, we just don't like the statute. So we're going to stomp our feet and say, we're not going to make any forward movements on this. I think to the extent that we can show that this is an issue that we take seriously, that we want to work with Hartford about, that we can come to them and say, here's what we're doing, here's what we've done, we've done all the right things. I mean, Canaan Parish is a huge accomplishment. And if I haven't congratulated you enough, I want to do it again here in front of everybody. It is a, an huge accomplishment. And I think that if we can take all of that and if we say, listen, we're, we're forming a committee and taking sort of people who are really passionate about this and who really care and can go to the state and say, but this is why it doesn't work in, in every town. This is why, this is how, why it works here and in other towns like ours. And here's what we're doing to address it here and we're serious about it. And guess what? We're going to, we're thinking about committing like serious town funds to this. And we have a committee that's working on that, like sort of a serious affordable housing trust. I think that shows a lot. I think that that is a really effective way of lobbying. And I think that that can be useful. And I think it's, it's, I, I like walking into meetings like that or like a courtroom like that where you can say, listen, we've done this. Not only do we have the facts on our side, but we're like doing the correct moral thing here.
So, I mean, as a challenge, I agree with under the concepts of what you're talking about. But I do think that there's a, there's an issue inside of communities. And we've all been in town government for a long time, doing different things. There's a lot of people here who have contributed unbelievable amounts of time and effort. The number of reports and studies and things that get done that can't actually necessarily translate into what happens in the real world.
Yeah.
Is legion.
Yeah.
And I think a huge, and, and it's okay to do some of those reports and some of it's good planning that can come back to, even if it does just gather dust on the shelf. I, I would though, just be very concerned that whatever we're trying to do doesn't interfere with other groups and cause discouragement of the other groups. Cause I think the last thing that, that mean P and Z, I mean, you guys are incredible for the committees that you sit through and the meetings and all of those things. And the last thing you need is another group coming in going, we spent nine months trying to write this regulation. Now you guys are coming in and saying, no, we've got to treat it around and do it this way and move something back and forth. Or if I'm trying to, to work some sort of a deal or whoever sits in my seat later is working a deal and somebody comes up and goes, no, no, we're going to do it this way. And you're like, it doesn't work.
Right.
I mean, we've been through this and how many times do I have to meet with everybody and go through seven committees in order to prove to you that it doesn't work?
Totally fair point. I think.
That's the tricky part.
Absolutely. And I think that that's a incredibly fair point. And I, as I said before with the utilities commission, the last thing I would want to do is create a bureaucratic layer that makes things run less efficiently. And I think the goal is, and for me at least, I don't know about the rest of you. I think one of the goals that I envisioned particularly, and it's something that Ms. Nielsen brought up is, is really setting down with this 830G moratorium application process. Cause that seems to be, it has to be sort of a major thrust of our strategy is, is getting these moratoriums. You know, it, it pains me that to hear there's only one person in the state that knows how to do this application. It's like, well, we've got to have somebody in town that's capable of doing this, that can become an expert on this and that can do this application. And it occurs to me that maybe if we had this commission, they could be tasked with managing that. And knowing how many units we have, knowing what's coming up, making sure we're on the right timeline and the responsibility for getting that in order and, and submitting it on time. Um, and following up with the housing department, just things like that, that's not resting. And, you know, somebody having to come in and, and ask to hire this consultant and the time that that takes and making sure their calendar is available when there's only one person in the state that can do that. I mean, that's just an inefficiency that we, you know, we have smart people in this town that can figure out how to, that can become that expert. So maybe that's.
I, I would say that it's, your first moratorium was like the second moratorium in the state.
Yeah.
And it just so happened and tied around with, there was a woman from Ridgefield who had done the other application, this worked out great. The time the task is between is huge.
Yeah.
And had we to do this over again, which we are, we would have kept a lot better records and everything would have been there. Meanwhile, we went through two plant town planners and, and all of a sudden we look back going, uh, yeah, nobody remembers what happened the last time. The records I believe are much, much better this time. And so, I mean, modifying the next, you know, this application and the next applications, those are all a lot easier, that's better understood. There's been other ones inside of the state, although it is still, I mean, it's less than 10. And so unfortunately developing that expertise is hard.
Yeah.
And you only need the expertise once every four, five, six years, which is a tricky part on that too. So, and, and I think some of that's actually in place already, but I'm not sure how well that's been stored. And of course we could be here four years from now going, yeah, it would have been great if somebody kept track. I can't guarantee.
Right. Any other questions for?
So I, it's Mark committed a comment because he'd mentioned that, um, I understand this, this law I know is not, is not what we all would like. But it's my understanding that it's not a requirement to get to 10%. That it is, you know, it is the way we don't have to worry about being, um, increasing a, any further, right, our, our housing. But it's my understanding that as long as we're increasing stock by 2%, like that should be really the goal. And going from moratorium to moratorium, that still means we still have to plan for affordable housing. And maybe we want to make it more than that. But really, I feel like the requirement's more about that than it is about getting to 10%. Isn't that, am I saying that right?
That's what the, again, it's nominally, we'll call it nominally 500 units. So that's, it's 70 some odd units.
Like two, increase in, increase of stock by 2%, not overall 2% of the total. It's just an increase in stock, right?
We've got a 70 some odd units.
Yeah.
Excuse me, which gets you to 150 points if you're at 60%. It's about 80 or 90 if you're at eight, 80 or 90 units if you're at 80%. So it's every four years, we've got to bring a Canaan Parish or a Millport online to have a moratorium.
To, to increase by 2% that stock.
That's what, that's what it equates to.
Over four years, but does it, so you're, but you're saying it's just more efficient to do it in the, in, uh, in volume.
You have to, we could ham and egg one moratorium by buying all of the duplexes in town and stringing together, you know, something in the neighborhood of 70, you know, you have 36 duplexes. And you put those together, that equals 72 units and that can get you to the, uh, a moratorium. But if you do that, you've now eliminated essentially, you know, half of the naturally occurring affordable housing in New Canaan. So we've created more of a barbell effect that, you know, if you, you used to be able to struggle and find your way into New Canaan, now you can't because we took that housing offline. But after you get done with those 30, you know, 35, 36 duplexes, now what? I mean, I think that there's four properties in New Canaan for sale for under a million dollars.
Right.
And I assume that those are probably like the duplexes or smaller houses. So again, the math gets really oppressive when it comes to the dollars. Um, I mean, if you bought single family homes, you know, that's $72 million if you bought all the $1 million houses.
Yeah.
And if you've shopped for a million dollar house in New Canaan, it's, it's tricky. And I don't think we have 72 million houses.
Yeah. I guess in my mind, I was thinking of it more of like phased approach, right? So if we, so, right, so if we, if, if we thought a certain area would be appropriate, then we wouldn't do it all at once. Potentially we would do it, again, it would be, you could make it efficient or effective by planning it out over, I don't know, 12 years. You know what I mean? Like rather than just saying, okay, we're going to do it this way and then we're going to wait four years and we're going to do, so that's, that's all I'm.
And sorry, it, it actually does, it has to be a flow in that you have, you know, roughly a year to put together a deal.
Yeah.
Roughly a year from when you put the deal together before you can actually start construction. And then a year in order to do construction.
Right.
And something's going to go wrong inside of that three-year process that four years, I mean, so you have to be forever vigilant, moving forward and trying to do something.
Right.
Um, and as it is right now, I mean, that next piece of land is, is, it's not obvious. And it's going to be expensive and it's going to cause, you know, we're going to need help.
Does the second phase of Canaan Parish, will that qualify us for the next moratorium? Or does it all depend on how this court case will eventually shake out?
It, it all depends on the court case.
Okay.
If we win the court case in whole, then we're several units short. And with several units short, you can figure that out.
Right.
But then to get the next 72 units.
Right.
That calls for another big development.
Understood. But we'd all, but whether we can use what's, and the Millport apartments, and this is just a, I'm just being very specific now. The Millport departments that we, they, the housing department currently is saying, we're not allowed to use for this moratorium that's pending, right? And this moratorium application that's pending. We had a certificate of occupancy for them at that time. So there could be a factual distinction that when we applied for this moratorium, we didn't have a certificate of occupancy yet for Canaan Parish too.
There's, there's all types, there's, there's all types of issues on, under here that again, get very specific and, and.
I'm putting my hat cap on.
Right. And, and the appeal, the appeal is very good and very.
Yeah.
For, I mean, it, it's done extremely professionally and exactly right.
Yeah.
And again, I, I don't think they have any grounds to stand on, but that's.
I'm just saying if we lose, I think we still have an argument that we can.
If we lose, there's other things we can go after, including the state, you know, how they've treated other people, how the fact that we've been delayed on our other moratorium because they were wrong on something affects other things. And there, it's just, it's really, it, it, again, it's very, very frustrating.
And there's a fact, this factual difference. You, Canaan Parish wasn't technically too, is too done? Are there people occupying it yet?
Yes. So, so sorry, they, they're occupying as of now. But that, that actually raised that question that they, we're going to get stuck in the, because of their decision-making process, we're stuck in a spot where they may choose to go ahead and like disqualify all of Canaan Parish too. Because we didn't have a moratorium in place because they had gone ahead and wrongly rejected our moratorium. Which is why we considered other options, looking at things as like, okay, well, if you aren't going to give us credit, is there other affordable housing needs that we can fill?
Right.
That would be better for the town. And we looked really hard at stuff and we really, we, we gave a good shot at doing that. And ultimately we came back that, you know, the original plan is the, is what's best for the project, um, at this time. you know, the original plan is the, is what's best for the project at this time.
It's really helpful. Anybody have any, anybody on Zoom have questions for Mr. Hobbs?
We don't have any hands raised.
No hands raised?
I'm going to watch and listen to this about six times so that I'm sure to understand everything Scott said.
It's really fascinating, I think, and the statute is overly complicated.
But I get the, I get the sense, Scott, and maybe this isn't fair, but you, you see the the ability of a commission to meet what's likely to be its intended mission is, is, is pretty unlikely. I mean, it, just the complexity of, of all the, of all the, all the issues that would have to be solved process-wise, financially, community involvement and, and, uh, you know, getting a consensus in the community. But you, you see this, you see this, this commission is having a really daunting challenge fulfilling a, a, a mission of let's say, you know, let's say the only goal of the commission was a rolling moratorium, even that, you, you, you'd say that the odds aren't great. Is that, is that fair?
Well, I, I don't, I'd almost change that around a little bit. I mean, you're correct in, in that interpretation, but I think it's, it's really important to clearly define what the mission of the commission would be. And how they would interact with the other groups. And if there's, if there's not, if, if there's a bunch of overlap that creates friction with the other groups, I don't think they could do anything that would be that, that beneficial, that it would merit the friction with the other groups. If you can come up with the right mission is to define it, then that's great. And I'd also very much encourage that whatever that mission is, should be attainable. Cause there, there's so much great stuff out there under how to really make wonderful affordable housing and everything's great. And that may work in certain environments. New Canaan is a 98% built out community. With law, I mean, property rights everywhere, there's longstanding beliefs, there's a whole bunch of stuff. We're not going to radically change and create some sort of brand new New Canaan. I mean, we've all, that's not going to happen in New Canaan. I mean, it'll, it'll happen over some people's dead bodies.
Kevin told me that anything is possible in New Canaan.
It's great. If, if the result is just in order that we can have great paperwork and look beautiful. I mean, there, there's a purpose for that, but it's, it's limited. And then inevitably it is to get creep and then you have interference in between the different commissions. So did that help clarify Tom or?
Well, but, but let's play that out. I mean, uh, let, let's invent a mission. It just use it as a hypothetical. Let's say the mission is uh, to accomplish a, a rolling moratorium that does, that never, never runs out, you know? But, but our, but, but forget the, forget the long term and say, we want to be sure that we're covered for the next five years. So that, that would encompass uh, getting really lucky on the, on the lawsuit, great, and then launching a cycle. And so that by the end of the following four years, we would, you know, we would, we would have protection and we would be ready to start a new cycle. So I, you know, to, to get that first four-year cycle, if that was our goal, just to do that, you know, could, could we go to the other bodies and say, you know, what, what can we do to, you know, supercharge this to make sure we don't get in your way? We don't get in the way of the housing commission or whatever, but, but one of the things we would try to do is make sure you had more funds. Another thing we would do is to try to help you build consensus and educate the public. But you, you would tell us, don't, don't tread on my, on my stuff here, but you know, it, it seems to me there are some, some gaps that we could fulfill, but, but I'd still want to know that we had a, we had a chance of success. I mean, you were saying, you, you know, that the clarity of the mission is necessary to get a, to, to get some successful odds, but um, would that be clear enough? If that's all we did?
I, I think it, I mean, I think there, there's merit to what you're saying. And again, it, it, you know, voting tonight, which you're not going to do is, is, that's not, that's not part of it, but I think there is, there's the opportunity for this to become helpful, but it's going to take some more really digging in deep and, and in a way, do you actually need a formal commission? Or is this almost a volunteer organization that works out of this? Could we use a, I, I, I'm just making this a part up. I mean, New Canaan Neighbors, who's the Canaan Parish nonprofit, could they end up becoming the advocacy, advocacy group that does this? If we were to expand, um, you know, if we were to expand uh, housing authority by two people and we could find some really good real estate people who want to be involved in this, would that fill that? Is a subcommittee out of um, P and Z? Does, does that work right? Or does that overburden them? Is, is it just one, you know, is it a half-staffed position at, at planning it on the administrative side of planning and zoning? Um, so I mean, I think that there's a couple of different ways to look at it. And the committee, if you, again, if you, if there's a great mission, awesome. If there's not, then so let's not do it.
So, but it does sound like you think there is some need, right? So to, I mean, are you of the opinion that nothing is needed to change? Or are you just, I'm just, I'm curious, like, because it sounds like what you just said, there might, there is a remedy, whether it's this or it's other um, options. It does seem like we need something more than we have today. Would you agree with that or?
Let me rephrase in that what we have today is not adequate and doesn't work. I don't know if anything can work. That's what I'm trying to express under this.
And Scott, that's the reason we put this together is because, you know, in the past couple of years, there have been a lot of issues in town, right? But the one issue that landed on everybody's dinner table is this one. And we kind of feel like if we don't try something, um, we're not doing our job. So, you know, and putting together at the suggestion of John Goodwin and you and, and others who thought about things like putting this committee together with liaisons from different, we talked about it earlier, town council, board of finance, board of selectmen. Planning and zoning is an integral part of this. Your committee is an integral part of this and trying to come up with, even if you start talking once a month, it's better than what we're doing now. Get in the room, get the people who know this better than anybody and get them talking about how are we going to get from where we are today to where we are four years, eight years, 12 years. It's just, we've got to start doing more, I guess, is really what we're trying to do.
And, and I know the, I know the the impulse of doing something is not always necessarily. And, and again, when you think under the real estate side, I mean, it would be very handy to have a streamlined, a streamlined process that is legal, which is very hard to do, where if somebody identifies a parcel that's come up, they can talk to housing authority, housing authority, we think it's a good idea. We double check with P and Z and they're like on board with the general thought of it. We're talking to finance and town council, everyone sort of comes together and you can start um, building consensus. But the moment you say, I want to buy property X in order to put up a 60, 70 unit development.
Yeah, it's going to happen.
It's in a total explosion. And so that's the part where I can't really get over. And I don't know how a commission doesn't make that worse. Yeah, I, hopefully it could. I mean, if, again, without all the FOIA and everything else, which we have, and we have it for good reasons. I, it's, I just don't, I'm not sure how well that can end up working.
Yeah, well, that's our job to try to help figure that out. So. I mean, one of the, one of the best, one of the better ideas I've heard in a long time, and John Engel discussed this at a, at a planning and zoning meeting was beginning the funding of this fund. I mean, we, this is all going to be very expensive, no matter what we do. If we're going to tackle this as a town, we put in, you know, X amount of dollars in our roads, $2 million a year to, to improve our roads every single year. Without fail, we just put it in, we put it in. That's the kind of money that we're going to have to commit as a town on an annual basis in our budget. That's going to get put into this trust fund year after year after year, so that we start to build up enough money so that we can even look at some of this stuff. I mean, we have to commit dollars to this too.
And dollars equals commitment on the part of the people. And, and again, it's great to say, oh, only those that have to build, they're only going to have to pay. Uh, you all end up paying somehow along the way. And if this is really important, you gotta put forward the dollars. And if it's not, that's fine, but the town people can end up saying, no, actually we don't want to put forward, you know, general fund dollars. And then at least though, if we get a 30G, everyone understands, you know, we made that choice.
But I think at this moment in time, I think this town is more than willing to pay a little bit more in their tax bill every year to make sure that this town doesn't.
Everyone cares a lot until they got a right of check.
Well, I mean, it's.
Then you get to really see how much it matters.
Yeah, I guess. But you know, we've had a lot of, a lot of talk about this issue, that's for sure.
And, and I also think we need to be in control of our own destiny. And if we're going to do that, we've got to invest and we've got to focus on it. And I mean, that's in my, we don't want things done unto us because we're not doing all we can do. That's, I mean, that, that would be my concern as well.
I put in a lot of years for that exact reason. And then there's people, a lot of people who have, and then that's.
No, but Scott, nobody's put more time into this than you have. And we can't say that enough because if it wasn't for you, we wouldn't be, we wouldn't be anywhere near where we are today. So.
With a lot of help from a lot of people.
And I'm making suggestions, you, you, you talk about the role of David McCarthy and what he's finding with David McCarthy.
There's a, um, so there, someone who was very influential and, and actually even more influential than me in this whole process was a guy named David McCarthy of Heritage Housing. And he was actually our first advisor through the Jonathan Rose Companies. Then Jonathan Rose got out of the affordable housing business. And he, when I started his own business, it, that helping to advise on affordable housing. And with the housing authority right now, I mean, we have no paid staff. We have nothing. That's all great when you're ham and egging it with, you know, one or two projects, you make something work, but eventually you have to actually do something. And David was instrumental hugely so in, in doing something. Where David is now is, is sort of moving out of the zone for, for doing that. And we're actively looking to find somebody else who can help replace that. Because if we do end, you know, when, not if, when we find the next possible development, we're going to need some sort of paid staff to do that. The affordable housing funds actually, as, as I view them, the affordable housing trust fund, that provides the seed money in order to help get us to the starting line. Once you actually get an approved project, there's lots of funding available. But you got this giant seven-digit gap between, you know, where, you know, thinking of something and actually getting there. Um, and, and that takes a lot of time and a lot of effort. And so that's one of the things that we are going to be looking for. That, that in all likelihood, that, that would fit under a housing authority role, not under a housing, affordable housing commission role. Um, but there are needs for some, you know, technical people to do something. And eventually, if we were to succeed and get 700 and some odd units, we need a housing, we need a paid housing authority as part of the town.
That's a management company that manages all those units?
We actually, I mean, like we have a management company that manages the properties and they're under the volunteer board. But there's stuff that comes up and it drags on the, the commissioner's time. And a lot of, of housing authorities are getting this issue that it's one thing if you had, you know, 100 units, you know, you can ham and egg it and they're not great units, who cares? All of a sudden you end up with a hundred million dollars worth of property and several hundred tenants, and you're not big enough to really support a, a staff. But you're big enough that it's like, this is no longer really a volunteer role. And again, if we're successful somewhere over the next couple hundred units, we're going to need to have, you know, paid help staff to do that. Which Canaan Parish can actually help fund some, but if we don't have section eight vouchers, then, then the affordable housing units, I mean, again, you run nip and nip and tuck and you're searching the couch cushions for dollars.
Was that the nonprofit management piece that you were talking about, Jen, Jennifer? Kristin, Kristin, sorry, Krista. But a, a non, a nonprofit entity.
And which, it likely, I mean, an affordable, a nonprofit can end up buying property, can end up helping to partner, can take donations from other folks, can add at different expertises. So they can fill a different niche. And if you had a, like Habitat for Humanity. So have, you know, they can actually help build or recycle housing units or rehab, um, housing units in order to get to another, to take them to another level. That's an example of a nonprofit that would fit directly in. And there's a bunch of church groups. There's other people who focus on that area. Um, but some of it can also be, you know, buying and holding and, and getting the land to begin with. Um, you know, land trust, we'll just put housing authority up on. Just kidding, everyone.
Did you want to speak, John, or did you have a question? Could I, could we get Penny's question first really quickly? Penny, did you have a question?
Yeah, um, yes, I do. Um, I have a faint recollection of some discussion about whether or not the town can put monies into a fund that does not have a specific project connected to it. That you can't tax your taxpayers for a non-project. You know, when you, when, when we budget for the roads, it is a, you know, specific, every year they have projects. And so the monies go right into that as opposed to going into a fund for some time in the future to be spent. And so I, I don't know whether or not that is a valid recollection or, or not.
We did do a little bit of research on other towns and there are affordable housing trust funds that are set up for that reason, but I think you might be, maybe you're talking about when, when you borrow money or you're talking about?
No, when you, when you budget monies every year that go into this fund, not to be used that year, so that you're actually taxing people for something to come in the future, that it's not an actual project.
Yeah, I think, I think the trust fund uh, gets around that also. You know, there's many times where we collect that money for roads and we may not spend it all in one year. It's an.
No, but they're, but they're, but, but they're budgeted. That's different because they, it, it is an identified.
This would be, become part of the budget as well. I mean, you'd have an annual budget line for this particular.
But if we don't, if, if it's not, we're budgeting for Frog Town in two years. If instead we're budgeting for unknown affordable housing project in two years. That might be the, I think that's what.
Yeah. So it's just something that I've, I've just had some recollection and discussion over the past and needs to be looked at as to whether or not you can tax your citizens for a maybe project.
We're making notes of it right now. Thank you.
We, we, we do, the way we do it with the land trust is we actually just write them a check. And it, the town has no say as to how they use the money, right? And so it's spent.
Yeah, that's different.
That's different. Well, why wouldn't that model work here?
Well, this is a town, Tom. I think it's a little different, but that's part, we'll tackle that. That's, that's a good, that's a good. I don't need to get in the weeds on that. John, did you have? Oh, sorry, Hillary, I'm running.
That's fine. No, please. Nobody needs to hear my voice.
So I, I thought I would start. I don't have quite so much uh, uh, notes.
That mic is hot.
Mike, I think you need to use this one.
Not this one.
Oh, that one's, that's good. You can hear it.
I came tonight because Tom sent me a question and he said, uh, with two blanks in it. And I think he sent it to all of the town council and a couple, and a few other, Dan Radman and a few others. And so I use that to sort of formulate my, my thinking. Tom asked, the new committee should help the town achieve blank, because if that goal isn't achieved, so what, you know, blank, what's the consequence? So I, I, I gave it some thought and I think it's consistent with everything I've heard here tonight. Which is the new committee should help the town achieve greater alignment and coordination between the housing authority, P and Z, and the funding bodies. I think that's what I'm hearing is that we need to make sure that whatever this plan is and its implementation plan is in alignment with the budget process, i.e. funding bodies. To which I would add BOE. Because as we just got that New Canaanite article about, you know, are our schools going to be overcrowded? Are they going to be, you know, do we have a large kindergarten class? So every time we make a decision over at the housing authority to build a new 70-unit complex, it has to be in coordination with the BOE. It has to be in coordination with the board of finance. The second que, a- and, and let me finish with what Tom said. So it's a coordination on it with housing authority, P and Z, and the funding bodies on the development of objectives. That's the plan. And, and implementation strategy, including funding recommendations. That's been missing from the current plan. The one that Krista said, the A thirty J, which is required by state statute, which was done, I think she said hasty or quickly. It didn't have funding recommendations, but the fundamental takeaway from that plan was the only, the, the primary strategy we have is one of, of, of leapfrogging from mandate to mandate, the 2%, 2%. That's what we've determined we have to do, but we haven't gone so far as to identify what funding, what period of time. And whether that, for instance, let's say you fund the 70 units. Is there, are there other ramifications? Have we gone and coordinated with Tiger on what does that do to our sewer system? What does that do to our water? What does that do to our roads, et cetera, et cetera? So it's a, it's fundamentally a, a a coordination between all of these bodies to create that plan and its implementation. Because if that goal isn't achieved, then we run the risk of three problems. One, development inconsistent with P and Z regulations and P O C D objectives. Two, the second consequence is spending outside our budget, such as legal fees now. We're doing that litigation now, we're doing that ad hoc purchases, we're doing that. We just, we're making an ad hoc purchase right now that wasn't in the budget. So this would be part of that, I think, you know, thinking about what are the strategic land objectives we should be picking up. That should be part of this this mission. So I wrote all this down for you and sent it to you. And then the third is failure of the Housing Authority to meet town objectives. This is the third consequence. Failure of the Housing Authority is waving our finger at Scott saying, you didn't meet the objectives to keep the moratoriums active. And when he says, yeah, but did you give me enough money? Right now, you you have a tax that provides four hundred thousand dollars on an average year. And I come to the town council and I ask to sweep that, but as I've already pointed out to you, it's not enough. And we don't have enough to actually manage the units. If we go to what he called the ham and egg. So that's the answer to Tom's question. I'm going to take issue with a couple of things. I'm going to take issue with his pessimism. I absolutely think this is achievable. And I absolutely believe it's a three-pronged method. I actually think that his favorite method, which is every four years you build seventy units. I think that's got to be, you know, one of our methods. I think the second method is that we do have to employ a ham and egg strategy. So that we own some of this land and that we decide the these duplexes. If the town owned ten duplexes right now, they could choose to put them into the moratorium. You know, it do put them in to this, you know, in order to achieve a moratorium. So I do think it's not just big significant projects, it's also making use of the existing affordable housing that already in every neighborhood all over town. Now, the third prong, and I'm not trying to solve the whole thing right here, but but Tom did say, watch this tape six or seven more times. The third prong is actually, and I think it's a responsibility of this committee, is to recommend uh, other methods such as, I was approached by somebody who owns five duplexes today, when we talked about that. And I said, what are you charging? And he said eighteen hundred dollars on, you know, on on a rent on one half of one of these duplexes. But I'm thinking of selling it. I'm old, you know, it's time. You know, do you think a developer is going to buy it? Do you think an investor who wants to run these at eighteen hundred dollars of rent? And he said, but my tenants have been there for twenty or thirty years. And I don't want to raise the rents on them. And I'm really nervous that if I sell the unit, somebody else will. My point here is, we don't have a mechanism to give that guy tax relief for providing affordable housing. We don't have a mechanism for getting those units into the into the affordable uh, housing a pool such that the state gives us credit for. If we went to the state and said modify it such that if we buy the and put them in or and private interests puts them in and pledges their units that they're going to keep these rents at eighteen hundred dollars, then let's get, let's give them credit for it. That should also be part, Tom, of the missions of this committee. So I'm actually think that it's a broader mission, one of alignment, but it allows this committee. Now I'm gonna, now I'm gonna switch gears. Having been on the town council and struggled with the formation of the Audit Committee and then the Ethics Committee. And who does it report to? And what is the statutory authority and et cetera, et cetera? A lot of these things are already in place. I actually think that, you know, through eight thirty J, you know, is 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 an authority that says you must provide, you must make this plan. And so we've already started working on it. We already have a land acquisition fund. We have that piece. We just don't fund it consistently because we don't have anybody in charge of making recommendations for how much we should fund it and where to get that money. I actually, and so I'm going to come back to, and I'm looking at Steve Karl now. How do I think it ought to be set up? When we first originally argued with the previous first selectmen over the Audit Committee and he said, we don't need one. And we said, we think we do. And he says, and we said, and you know, we think it's so important that we're going to make it an advisory committee to the town council. Because we want to understand the implications of our audits. And if you don't think it's of value to you, then you're right. We're not going to make another committee that advises the first selectmen. We're going to make the committee that advises the town council. So that we ostensibly, we who set the budget priority. And then the first selectmen, they're the beginning, the selectmen are the beginning of the budget process. And then Board of Finance, you know, crafted and and refine it, but you're the last step. So what's going to happen is you're going to say, we're, we got advice from our advisory committee. And we've, and this is what we'd like to see in the budget. And then those bodies will make that budget. And if you don't like how it comes back to you, you send it back. That's the mechanics of making sure that affordable housing is a priority of the town council and is appropriately funded. That that they are a coordinating entity, but they have to report to somebody. And I'm saying, and I think it ought to be you. I think they need to go talk to P and Z about, you know, well, this next unit is coming, you know, wh- whether, you know, what P and Z needs and what the Housing Authority needs, but ultimately I think they ought to report to you.
Got that, Hillary?
I do.
Tom, you can just watch the tape a few more times.
Probably seven times for you.
Thank you, John.
Thanks, John.
I'm I'm much more optimistic than Scott Hobbs. I think we can do this. Oh, and actually, to respond to what you said, which is who's going to be the bad guy? I actually think it's this committee. I think if this committee says, you know what, we've decided that the plan is to build seventy units. And we've, and then we went and talked to P and Z about the different places where we think. And we've asked P and Z to identify places where such a such such a thing could occur. But then I think they, that this bad guy committee, the developer essentially, just asked asks the Housing Authority to execute on those missions. So he's not choosing winners and losers. The committee is picking the winners and losers and asking the Housing Authority to execute on those strategies. So that's how I would answer that Scott Hobbs objection of not being the bad guy.
Any questions for Mr. Engel, the Honorable? Mark? Mark?
Yeah, first off, I just want to say I miss John Engel and I agree with pretty much everything you just said. And it was very insightful. I also appreciate Scott's comments. They're always appreciated. I guess my my question is is for Scott. You know, in the beginning of your comments, you you mentioned a lot of numbers and economics. And I'm, my simple question is, i- if you could take a blank sheet of paper here and and I'm not saying throw money at at an issue, but could you give us a ballpark in terms of the economics that that the town would need to commit on an annual basis? Or better yet, if you don't want to answer that question, what would be the first thing you would do?
Well, I think that, you know, there's, as John brought up, you know, a specific, you know, potential acquisition type target that, look, if there's a block of units that come available, those are of interest. And and just clarifying real quickly, having individual units spread throughout town is a real pain in the neck to monitor and manage. And somebody's got to look, go there, you got to pay staff more. It's just a real hassle just getting around. Having some stuff together, all of a sudden, now you got a little economy of scale and you can get some, you know, one guy cuts all the lawns. One guy does all the painting, you know, your guy cleans all the gutters and it becomes a lot easier. So you have some opportunistic things that come up and you can't plan for the, you can plan for some of them if you're really active and went out there and and started, you know. And again, I'm not sure whether or not we're allowed to, you know, use a straw man like Captain Jack in order to go and start acquiring, you know, inquiring as to who's interested in selling and trying to set this up and make sure people talk with us. Or if it has to be the Housing Authority or the town of New Canaan, with all of the neighbors knowing that if you sell to them, what's going to happen in the future? You know, if four people sell together, does that become a big unit? And and that's going to cause strain. But so we have an opportunistic time. And for that, you know, is is it a couple million dollars of equity in order to support, you know, a purchase of, you know, the grouping of units? Let's call it a couple million bucks, you know, it might be three, it might be four, depends what we can borrow on, depends whether or not we can use the town's borrowing at you know, closer to three or do you have to borrow outside of that at five, six, seven? So there'll be opportunities, there'll be chances where several million come up. There's also a couple of other bigger pieces of property.
But can be leveraged. What is the current leverage? What's the leveraging right now of the Housing Authority? How much do you need as a stake? Do you need one million for a five?
Per unit?
On a percentage basis? How how high, how much do you leverage on a percentage basis?
I'm just going by, I'm just going by the fact that here, the rents that we can get. And again, I'm stepping out because we haven't managed, you know, multifamily duplex thing, you know, we haven't managed duplexes in single-family homes. But if you figure again around a grand per month per unit, which translates into supporting equity of somewhere between a hun- the numbers I had in here, it was like two, call it, call it, you can support two hundred and fifty thousand bucks in equity. Oh, sorry, in loan and principal payments per unit that you buy. So if I'm paying five hundred, I need two fifty in equity to subsidize. So two fifty in equity times ten units, you end up with two point five million.
So as an example, two months ago, five duplexes all next to each other on River Street sold for four point oh five million. So they were assessed by the town, appraised by the town at three and a half and they sold for a slight premium to that for four million dollars. So eight eight hundred per unit, you know, or actually, since they're all duplexes, four hundred per apartment. And what I'm hearing from Scott is that for that four hundred thousand dollar unit, we need one hundred thousand dollars was my estimation. He's now saying he's only leveraging it up by double. You need two hundred thousand to get a four hundred thousand dollar unit. You need two million to make a a four million dollar purchase at River Street?
I'll speak slowly. I don't know what I can borrow at and we don't know what it costs in order to actually run the units and get them ready. So we're only guessing and we're guessing it about, you know, the, again, rents can probably support two fifty and two fifty and two fifty in principal borrowing.
I'm just trying to get back to his question, which was how much, you know.
If I may, I I basically heard, and correct me if I'm wrong, Scott. I'm I'm hearing a commitment of, you know, anywhere from two to three million dollars a year seems to get you about ten units per year.
Well, it, and again, some of the, the one, the one hassle, on average, yes, the one hassle is it's sort of opportunistic. So I mean, one set of ten units comes up in a year, then yes, in around two and a half. But let's say another one comes up right near there and you're going, we've hit, you know, this is awesome. Well, then we're going to need to come back and get more. Or let's say that one of the the big parcels that would be really appropriate for affordable housing, you know, with very little objection, I believe, came available. You know, we may need, like, you know, it may be a five, six, seven million dollar type land purchase of which we need support on the whole thing because we got to buy the land and then we've got to use all of our available funds to get us to start the development. And then, you know, maybe we can circle back on on, you know, whatever else we may not need.
You know, I I I pretend, I'm just trying to get the mindset into individuals as to, okay, what is an annual? If a large lot comes up, obviously, that would, in, you know, that would increase the value. But if you conceptually put a two and a half to three million dollar number in your head in terms of what the budget would would need to address, then, you know, I think people, or at least I can get my arms around it and I hope others can too.
Yes, and and again, like, if a big piece piece came up and you got it, you're like, okay, well, that gets you four years and maybe we don't buy the next piece right away. Or you only buy it if it has another purpose that is income producing, that'll carry it until you can develop it.
Yeah. And do we know, I mean, how many large lots?
It doesn't have to be large, but if it's not, it becomes a management nightmare to try and
No, I get that.
As far as large lots, it's also it's trying to identify ones that don't have serious income-producing properties on them. Otherwise, it's going to be way too expensive.
Connected to water and sewer.
It's got to be, so water and sewer district. And it's got to be in an area that doesn't have a whole lot of single-family residents nearby.
So like, we're already shrinking.
You have a very small number of those. And then for the other ones, again, there there's a lot out there, how they come together. It's questionable and that again gets to that part as as a town, what are we willing to to do to our fellow citizens?
Let me just answer another way. I remember on ten, probably ten years ago, I went to Steve Kleppen when he was the town planner. And I said, there's two, there's a pair of duplexes on Forest Street, which is a neighborhood full of them. I said, could I knock those down and build, instead of two, could I build like, could I put them together? And he said, no, the zoning laws don't, you know, we don't have zoning laws to allow us to do anything but what they are now. And I said, so they have to be two and two. They can't, we can't put them together and make six. And we can't make, even though you want senior-friendly, you know, single-level units and and we want we we can't get clever and creative. And he said, no, your zoning laws don't allow that. So if we said that this was important and we said we want to start to, we asked P and Z to start to accommodate. Then you could tell the guy who, you you could tell a developer who bought the five units on River Street, instead of being satisfied with ten, will give you the right to do twenty. We don't want a hundred, but you could do twenty. But we want you to put a certain set aside. You know, we want twenty-five percent of them. We want half the benefit to go into the affordable pool. We don't have those mechanisms in place right now. So my point is, we don't have to own.
Well, we have fifteen percent, right? It's fifteen percent of a new development, not half. We need more.
Well.
Right.
Ten years ago, we, yeah, so last year we we passed that and those are the kinds of things we need to do.
Well, and 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 the problem, again, to get back to math, though, and fifteen percent. You know, at 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 six percent interest rates, we're not going to see a lot of development in New Canaan. You know, at three percent. Who knows? Yeah, but even that becomes tight. And to get to twenty or twenty-five, where you really start moving the needle, we'll have zero development.
We have a hand up on.
We have a hand up. Jacamo's had his hand up for quite a bit. Can we get Jacamo's hand first and then we'll get Arnold's?
Sneak over here, just so. I think what I'm hearing and and since I'm new to town. I'm hearing a lot of deck chairs being rearranged. I'm hearing coordination among existing groups. I'm hearing the same people talking to each other and working better together. And that may be interesting, but that's not going to bring new vitality to the discussion. So if you want to make this a coordination body among the various legal entities in New Canaan. That's one thing. And and if it's just driven about solving the moratorium, the eight thirty G moratorium. That's basically like an administrative role to make sure every four years you are submitting this thing and it's getting approved. That's not addressing affordability. That's playing right into the hands of people who are trying to do developments and saying that the town is not serious about affordable housing. And also what I hear is a lot of discussions about individual deals. We can buy the River Street duplexes, we can buy this, we can buy that. We need to have a mechanism so I can go bing bang boom and make the transaction. We are running a town. The town has to have a plan. This is not about real estate transactions at hyperspeed. This is about where do we want to be over a five or ten-year period? What are the structures we need to have? All of the ownership of homes is digitized now. We know all of these structures today, who's owned by nonprofits, which are focused on affordable housing. We know people who live in adjacent towns and have like five duplexes. We know all of this today. Because of the good work that's been done. And we also should put out the math that people are talking about. What does it actually take to make these projects work? Explain to people about how affordable housing works, not just sort of like vagaries about like it's going to cost four hundred or six hundred or five hundred thousand. The details about why that's the case. The town has plenty of land. This is not a discussion about buying land. This is a discussion about where do we want to put affordable housing? What kind of affordable housing do we want to put in? Who do we want to manage that? And how does the economics get distributed? Who do we want to manage that? And how does the economics get distributed? Because there's gonna be winners, and there's gonna be losers, and there's gonna be people coming out in the middle. And this has to be totally above board. Otherwise, people are gonna feel that there's some shadiness going on. So I really encourage people to focus on the plan. Make that comprehensive, get buy-in, talk to the community. This is what we're doing, and it's not just about town water and sewer. We have very large users of the septic system, which are not connected. So you have the hospital over on Valley Road, which is pumping. They're not connected, and you have the golf course, which is also pumping, uh, not connected to the system. So what does it take actually to do non-septic housing on multifamily? It's not just about burdening the existing sewer treatment plant. We need to talk about what additional investments need to be made. Put that all out there, not vagaries, not I heard this, I heard that. Put them out on A four or PowerPoint slides so people can read it and understand that, you know. The superintendent said that the kindergarten is gonna be blown out in like three, four years. Is that a one-off, or are we actually getting a lot more kids here? Because the millennials are actually hitting prime family making age, and the millennials that wanna move here have three kids. And this is their first kid, and we expect two more, therefore we expect the next five or seven years to be big time on schools. Or this is just like a COVID catch-up. What exactly is, we know that we have five years uh, warning. The other thing I'll have to say is, one I've learned looking at this thing, there are a lot of individual owners of these entities. So New Canaan Housing Authority has got the brand, New Canaan Housing Authority, but it's a very independent organization. It's also not necessarily linked just to New Canaan. You have the ability to cross borders as housing authorities. So while we're all friends here, we have different issues associated with that. So it's not, so we can make an agreement that New Canaan Housing Authority is going to have exclusivity to operate all public housing in New Canaan. But that's a decision that we can, that we should make, or what's going on with New Canaan Neighbors Inc. My point is, put this all out there, a massive education effort, because it's not as the branding would indicate. Uh, when people see it just on first blush. So I really encourage you to think differently. And to think new. And if you do that, I think it'll be successful. If it's just, how do we solve the moratorium? We got lawyers to do that, and that'll solve itself.
Jacomo, just, and thank you for your comments. I, I actually, when I sent the original email to Kevin back in, I actually have it here, October sixth, to try to get this going and. Uh, put this together, and obviously government works very slowly. I put together, um, I don't know, probably fifty names of people that just off the top of my head, didn't look at anything. Fifty names of people that I thought would be good for this committee. And you were in the top ten, because you, you, well, because A, you, you, you checked the boxes of being relatively new. You're an amazing writer, and you've studied this issue a lot. And you, I think you would be a good addition to this, because we do need new people on this and, and members of the public to serve. So you're in my bullseye, baby, so watch out. Thank you for your comments.
Can I address one small thing? Because Krista brought it up, and now it's come up a, a second time. The um, the, the hats that was put in place by ordinance on building goes into a fund. It's not exclusively for the use of the New Canaan Housing Authority.
No, no.
That changed?
It, it goes through, it goes through the Housing Authority, which can then go ahead and utilize it for any of the purposes as far as related to affordable housing, including partnering with people. And so it's not that, it, it just means that.
It doesn't automatically go to the Housing Authority?
It has to.
Housing Authority has to come to the town council and ask for the money every single time. And he's not the only one who can ask for the money. I could ask for the money. Jacomo could ask for the money. And, but then that got, but that was the case, and that just got changed. Now only he can ask for it, but he still has to ask the town council. So there is some oversight, town council oversight on housing authorities sweeping the money. Only because she said, I don't know how the money gets.
And to, to Jacomo's point under the uh, the new blood stuff is that there's always a problem inside of towns that a lot of people. You develop areas of expertise, and you go so freaking deep. And then how does anyone else ever end up coming in and figuring stuff out and doing things? And there's the old saying that, you know, never let a good crisis go to waste. You know, there's a group of people who've been trying to educate the town for twenty years. And I think it took me like seven years before I listened to Laslow, and you're like, you're insane, you're a researcher. Holy crap, he did worse than what I thought it was, and now there's a lot of people who are actually willing to listen.
Right.
And so if, if people are willing to listen. Take advantage and let's educate anyone who's willing to do it. You know, by tomorrow, something else will come up and they won't care anymore, but you know, they, let's take advantage of it and try to do something.
I, I think Jacomo also brought up a good point, one of many, but uh. Because we were talking about the three-prong approach, and, and I do think the fact that we do have land that the town owns today. Can I finish first?
Well, yeah, we have.
Right, so I guess what I'm saying is, that could be part of the process, evaluating the land that we have. And really, and I've heard, you know, that, that, oh, we can't do it because of this reason, we can't do it because of that reason. But I, I think we need to relook at some of these pieces.
You've done that, and Leah, your brother's done that. Waving.
I, I'd love to understand that. I'd understand that a little bit more.
Six or seven hundred acres.
Yeah.
I couldn't find two and a half acres to build a police department, which probably would be less controversial than a eighty, eighty unit.
I don't know if I'd say that.
And, but most, you know, believe me, they don't work. They don't work.
Well, I, I'd like to believe you. I would like to understand that a little bit more, to understand what the issues are. I, I, I trust that you've done the due diligence. I would like to understand it, because I, I, you know, a part of my job was. Looking, relooking at things and maybe looking at them differently, and so I, you know, I, again, I don't doubt that you did the work. I would just love to understand. It more.
Seat's warm here, if anyone wants.
Well, don't, don't get up too quickly.
Dan hasn't had any chance to talk.
Ar- Arnold did have his hand up, but his hand is down. I just wanna make sure that he didn't have, he's, he had his hand up for a while, but it's down now. Arnold, did you have a question for Scott or for anybody else?
I had more, regrettably, I had a separate board meeting this evening that I'm driving home from, so uh. Uh, otherwise I would have come in person, but uh, I've only been on for about fifteen or twenty minutes. Uh, Jacomo asked for some of the numbers. So in today's market, it costs between six twenty-five and six hundred and fifty thousand dollars to build an apartment unit. Uh, exclusive of land. Okay, by the time you add to your hard costs, your soft costs, um, and then you have to add a land portion for that. Um, so the economics uh, are difficult but not unreachable. However, you know, the town putting aside a few million dollars does not change that needle. Uh, and I've offered it before. I'm happy to go sell Hill Street to the town to go build. So that we have not one moratorium, but another one and potentially uh, one after that. But uh, it comes down to, and I, uh, somebody texted me who was listening. Um, you know, you need a planning and zoning committee that instead of viewing these as hostile uh, applications. Have to go work with the developers. They're gonna apply, uh, be it me or anybody else. Uh, with a mandate from the state of housing is important. So they're not hostile. They're uh, what is available at the time as a tool. On the other hand, you know, I've gone to planning and zoning on my property with various things. You know, nobody wanted any of them, so le- leaving me no alternative. On the other hand, if you can work with your planning and zoning, and they have in Greenwich to some degree, uh, they're building. Uh, right now, uh, thirty percent is a high bar for a developer, so he needs a lot of density. Because remember, I need seventy units to pay for those thirty, but really you're building at six hundred plus thousand dollars apiece. Again, without land to subsidize. That's why the buildings are so large. Uh, you know, you can't build one affordable next to a market rate. The numbers don't work. So that's why you end up with these larger structures. Um, or you need, as in Stanford, there is somebody, uh, his name is Richard Friedman, who has just been building affordable housing. Out of the kindness of his heart. So, you know, you either have to look at the numbers, but the reason you get the density is you can't build a building with twenty units. Uh, unless you have very low price land, uh, and make the numbers pencil out. So that, again, with density, I wish I was there for the early part of this, but you know, I'm not sure the town wants to be. Uh, putting up money, I think a better alternative is to work with uh, developers and come up with something that they will build. Put the money up for, and you have forty years too. But the other part that I can tell you is I've spoken to state legislators from all over our state. And there will be no massive change to eight thirty G. Um, you know, there should be some tweaks. I think it is far from a good law. Um, on the other hand, it is the law. So saying geez, we'll wait for legislative change. Probably won't happen while any of us are active in this uh, field.
Don't make assumptions about my age, please. Thanks, Arnold.
None of us, none of us have seventy years.
Hey.
Arnold Scott here. It's a quick question. Is there any sort of rule of thumb as to if you're able to go to four floors versus three floors? As to an economy of scale, or does it just, yeah, sorry, getting an economy of scale for production cost per unit? Or does it just allow for more green space?
Uh, it just, it, it's, it's, again, it's a hybrid of both. It's a little bit of both. Because again, the units that you're subsidizing, Scott, and I'm happy to show you my, uh, you know, the worksheet. Uh, just like we ran into Canaan Parish. We did sixty units because we needed to move sixty, and then we built forty. Because that's sort of what we had the land for. But, yeah.
We don't answer, and then we answer when it's acceptable time.
Did I just lose you guys?
No.
You're back.
Uh, sorry about that. Um, so yeah, again, it, it becomes a density issue. If you had a large piece of property, you could build two stories and, you know, like we used to. The problem is, once you're in elevators, you wanna get to the third floor, and then it makes it look so normal to get to the fourth floor. Um, but you know, I have offered as not the predatory builder, but as a guy who's very active in New Canaan to try to help this committee or anything else. Uh, at the New Canaan, uh, I ate coffee this morning. Uh, I suggested that maybe instead of using the law firm that we're using, who. Their side of affordable housing to find an, an attorney who's on the, this is how affordable housing is done. Side uh, might be good for the town also.
Thanks, Arnold.
Sounds like Arnold and I are due to have lunch.
Dan, I'd be happy to.
Uh.
So.
Well, first, congratulations on being elected Chair of.
Thank you.
P and Z. I think.
Think.
Jinx.
So is that, is that Mike hot there, Dan?
Yeah, you might have to slide this one over.
I just want to, so everybody can hear you. So I think we're, we're getting a little into the weeds, and Scott, if you could hang for one more second, because I do want your input on a couple of questions.
I wasn't going too far.
We're kind of getting into, we're becoming the committee here, talking about the intricacies and, and logistics of steering around and through eight thirty G applications. And the, the law itself, and I think that should be saved for when the committee is put together. But as far as uh, the, the town and this proposed committee's responsibility to the town occupants. And understanding and, and providing visibility to where we are and what we can realistically achieve with affordable housing. There are a few things that everyone in town needs to know, and that is that. We, the affordable housing that we've been talking about is deed restricted affordable housing provided by the town or by the Housing Authority. Uh, or by a developer. It's not to say that there isn't affordable housing in town, right? Um, this is some feedback that I've gotten from a lot of people in town. They're scratching their heads going, why don't these things count? Because I'm a landlord in town, I know other landlords in town, and we have units that could qualify under affordable housing guidelines, the eighty percent or the sixty percent. But they're not deed restricted.
Right.
So that's, that's where we fall deficient and where the law is flawed in its calculations, and I think we can all agree upon that. The other thing is to understand what the realistic outcome of achieving or trying to achieve the ten percent, if that's even possible. And that's where I'd like your input, because you talked about the, I think you called it the barbell effect. Um, as we, as we uh, acquire and develop properties in town for these higher density developments. You're now also diminishing the, the, the availability of median income, not affordable housing, but median income families in town. And it's, it's starving the mid-range, um, which is gonna be a detriment to the town as well. And I don't know if you wanna talk to that or explain that a little bit better. Um, you know, we, we have to be careful about, about how much development. I know there's a state law, and we're all trying to meet it. But I think as a town, we have to look at it from perspective of the municipality, not the, the state mandate. What's right for this town? How much development does it really need to see? And then try and steer through the consequences. Um, we do have multiple properties in town that we own, that we, we could take advantage of. Um, but as Kevin can explain, and we had a buildings committee that went through this and published the report three, four years ago that Penny was in charge of, right? Um, there's limitations to each one of those, and, and some of them are just sheds, right? They're, they're on a back lot of Saks, Saks School, so it's not developable property. We do have some. Um, but is it enough to satisfy the, the ten percent quota? I don't think so. I don't think this town could ever get to the ten percent quota. It's just, just think about it this way. It would be building the view apartments. It would be building another seven of those somewhere in town.
I don't know that anybody thinks that's a reasonable.
I know, but that's what the state's mandating, and we keep talking about.
Keep saying that. It's not a quota, it's not a mandate. It's, it's, it's not a mandate, and it's not a quota, and we don't need to reach it ever.
We're not going to, yeah.
Not going to. I think we can all agree that that's not the, that's not our goal, and that's not gonna be the case. I think we need to be realistic.
Right.
And yeah, that's all.
So, so another, another thing that the town and the committee and our council should consider is pushback on the state legally, not just in terms of an appeal. On their decision of counting our, our credits towards the uh, Canaan Parish development, but other, other municipalities and other uh, towns in the country, not just in Connecticut. Are fighting back on their state mandates for affordable housing and the quotas that they set back, uh, set for them. Huntington Beach, California, in particular, is one of them. And they're, they're suing the state because of unfair regulatory practices on mandating these, these um, percentages for the town. That they just can't sustain them, they can't develop them, they can't satisfy them. And that's something that our legal counsel and other, you know, uh, municipalities in our region should also consider. Um, I, I just don't think we should, you know, bend over and try and satisfy something that's not achievable. Or try to, at our own detriment.
And I, I mean, I, I, I was a litigator in my former life and a, a trial attorney, so I, I don't necessarily disagree with a tough legal strategy. So certainly it's something, other towns within Fairfield County have affordable housing committees. And so it might be effective if we had one to partner with Greenwich, Wilton, Fairfield.
Agreed.
And try to work together on that sort of strategy, and, and then there could possibly be one law firm that could work for us on, on some sort of legal strategy like that. Like, I'm not averse to anything like that. I also think, I think your, your point about the, the squeezing out of median homes is a really interesting one. And I think Ms. Nielsen touched on it. I mean, that's also happening because people are tearing down those median homes and building huge homes on lots. So it, I worry less about an affordable housing unit or complex squeezing out those homes. I mean, we, we see it on the other end as well. So what is, what can planning and zoning, or could this commission do something to? We're not gonna, are we gonna tell people who wanna build a three million dollar home on Douglas when they're tearing down a median home that they can't do that either? Um, so it, you know, we can't say we're not gonna do it for affordable homes, but allow it for these huge homes that are also squeezing the medium, median. It's hard for me to feel sympathy for one and not for the other.
But all, all of that then trickles down to an impact on our infrastructure, whether it's roads or police force or school or, or sewer system, whatever it may be. Um, we have to rethink and, and probably do something beyond the, the building permit tax on development that goes into the Housing Authority Fund, right? Do something that's a little bit larger so that, and this is something I had discussed with, are my. Do something that's a little bit larger so that, and this is something I had discussed with our, my, one of my predecessors, Laszlo Pap.
Yeah.
Um, and, and talked about a, let's call it an infrastructure fund, right? Where if anything is developed on a piece of property that is above and beyond the current zoning regulations allow. There is a fee that is instituted for each unit above and beyond the current zoning. That would go into an infrastructure fund that would then serve the housing authority. It would serve the police force. It would serve the expansion of schools, et cetera. And that wouldn't apply just to a certain type of development that would play globally to the entire town. Um, to every zone, to every application that if you're increasing that density beyond what's currently allowed. You're, you're gonna have to, you know, uh, pay a fee. Um, I think that would be a wise way to, you know, supplement and, and reinforce the housing authority fund and what we do in the future.
I love that.
Interesting idea.
You know? I had one more thing and I just can't think.
I'm sorry, I interrupted you and I interrupted your train of thought and that was not.
No, that's okay.
So sorry.
Um, I, I. I think that's.
Litigation is where you ended, us taking on Hartford and the, and the statute.
Yeah, it, it's just being smart about it as a, as a committee and, and pooling our resources with the other towns that are doing the same. You know, uh, going down the same efforts and trying to address these things at the state level. It should also be part of the mandate of the committee, right? It's, it's not. We're being affected by the state laws. Let's address the state laws or at least try to with the other towns in the region because. We heard it during one of our applications, right? If, if it was a, if eight thirty G was not a municipal law, but a regional law. We'd be done. We would satisfy the ten percent right now because of our adjacencies to Norwalk and Stanford. But it's not.
Cause a question, when you talk about deed restricted, what, does anyone know? The reason why it needs to be deed just restricted, like why did they put that in there? No, no, I understand, but so what like.
They don't want it in and out.
Okay.
So they wanted to count and, and.
So they don't want people to be like, oh, it's going to be uh affordable housing for three years and then we're going to change it.
Right.
Right? So that's why. Okay. So is there, so I, I, yeah, just looking at it creative creatively, is there a way to satisfy that? Can we make things that aren't deed restricted, deed restricted? Is there a way to do that?
Well, like one example of a way that if, if we really wanted to solve and make a big dent in affordable housing issues. If you went ahead and said that, that municipalities can approve the accessory dwelling, dwelling units.
Right.
In places that make sense. And if those units are under this sort of rent, then they'll count as affordable. But if you sit there and you have a three million dollar property in New Canaan. And you can do a garage above your, on a two acres and you can do above your garage, you can do a little apartment up. Teacher or something at eleven hundred dollars a month. A lot of people would do that. If you say, but you're going to have to actually treat it as a legally deed restricted affordable housing, meet all of the requirements of the affording how. About affordable housing rules and qualifying your tenants, certifying them, live under the rules of HUD and CHAF and make sure that all this works. And you can't get rid of it for thirty years. And oh, by the way, the tenants end up having even more rights than normal tenants. So it's really hard to kick them out. Now, would you go ahead and do that on your thirty, you know, on your three million dollar property for a thousand bucks a month?
And wait till you sell.
Which, by the way, when you sell it, you give the tenant even more rights over what they're able to stay. So those actually, it, it directly interferes.
Right.
The, uh, for a couple of things under the barbell effect, I mean, the fact that we're, that we're bound by means um, state income. As opposed to area state income is really bad for Fairfield County. Cause it's just, we end up getting stuck again that are, are, it, it's hard to find. People to fill all of our affordable housing right now. Um, you know, the multi, the multiple bedrooms are actually relatively easy to fill the singles though. I mean, if you want an affordable unit, you can get in within a month or so. Now, Canaan Parish, I don't know if it's going to be the exact same way, but with the next development and the next development, the next development. It, it's not a, it's not like people are beating down the doors in order to have a single family, um, a single uh bedroom unit inside of New Canaan. And as we talked about with the naturally affordable. Uh, you know, again, if you take the duplexes, that's our naturally affordable, and now we're going to make them a little bit more affordable, but. This group becomes wiped out. You know, if you could, if you didn't want to be in the affordable housing and you had eight hundred bucks, eighteen hundred a month to spend. There's no more eighteen hundred. Now you gotta go to nineteen. I think one thing that the view proved in New Canaan was we needed a, a much wider diversity of housing stock. And it would be great if we could create a much wider diversity of housing stock. But then there's a whole bunch of rules that we can't necessarily control it. I mean, the concept Arnold's talked a lot about workforce housing. It'd be great if people who work in New Canaan could go ahead and we can set them up under housing stock. Fortunately, they make too much, but we can't help them because that would violate fair housing rules and therefore we can't segregate and put something aside. And you know, there's some creative ways that we could possibly. Address that such as if you said, um. Okay, we'll go ahead and we'll allow more density, but no unit can ever be more than seven hundred and fifty square feet. You can never combine them. You can never do something else. So in theory, you're kind of like limiting the rent of that at some level somewhere that might hopefully be toward affordable. But once you set that rule, that's the only rule, and then you gotta hope it works. And if it doesn't, well, if you gave them more density and that's, and they get away with it. So I mean, there, there's, there's things tried, but I don't think there's a huge track record on them. And again.
If you try it.
A lot of laws out there that each time you go, this is a great idea. And then you go, yeah, but it's illegal.
There's so much. State and federal law and you've got FHA, you've got.
Though, are you locked in for thirty years and then you can flip out of it or is that?
As an idea, for example, if you were to say that, um. Look, we're going to go ahead and we'll allow you to have a four story and get this number of units. But the units are seven hundred and fifty square feet. You can never combine them. So you don't end up with the situation where someone goes. Great, I'll buy the whole floor and you get one apartment. So it's, that's it. And at that point, again, no one's going to pay ten thousand dollars a month to live in a one bedroom, seven hundred and fifty square foot apartment. Is there enough people that'll pay enough to make that economically viable? I don't know. I mean, and then I'm sure we can get, we can be figured out in some sort of math way and, and I think that for P and Z, talking to developers. Is, is again, guys like Arnold and other people out there, they'll share a bunch of the numbers. And ultimately it comes down to the numbers. And if it doesn't work economically, it's not going to happen and we'll get zero. And with zero, then we have no change in housing stock. And so whatever we have today is what we'll have forever.
Penny's had her hand up for a while.
I just, before Penny jumps in.
Sure.
I'll finish up my comments and I just remember what I was going at.
Okay.
Um, we talked about the responsibilities and, and the work that the commission or the housing. The um, affordable housing commission or whatever we're going to call it does. But what's most critical is making sure that the support on our planning and zoning side, which is our planning and zoning staff. That we're going to have enough of them.
Yeah.
To be able to satisfy and produce and some, and um. Uh, complete the whatever, whether it's a moratorium application or any of the other paperwork that goes along with. Affordable housing applications. Uh, and get it into state in timely manners. We have an incredible workload. Um, on, on the P and Z side, you know, our planner's been smart. We, we heard the stories with how the moratorium evolved. Um, all of which, had we had enough staff, had we, had we been doing it earlier. We may have been able to avoid certain things or get them, got them in earlier. I know there was hiccups with the state and, and all of that that couldn't be avoided. But in moving forward in the future, we just need to make sure there's enough support in there because. Krista did a huge heavy lift on the eight thirty J side, right? Um, in conjunction with our planner. But it shouldn't be the, the commission's responsibility, commission members doing that heavy lift. It should be the planning and zoning staff and the appropriate people in the planning and zoning staff doing that. And they're going to be there not only to support us, but to support this new commission and making sure that all the paperwork's filed accordingly. Um, and Kevin and I have talked about it. Um, I know there's been, you know, movement and we're talking about hiring many new people and all that, but that's absolutely critical. So when it comes to. Budgetary decisions and staffing decisions that town council might hear. Please take that as a very important component because um, it's the only way that the. The uh, decisions and the mandates and the recommendations of the council are actually going to be implemented is because, because of staff. Um, the availability of staff. Good point. Sorry, Penny can have the floor.
Penny?
Interesting sitting here listening to all of this because what the reaction is, it is a. Multi-layered, very, very complex issue. And the more, um, as I've been wanting, listening to people discuss this. The more input from various factions of the issue sit together with one another. Um, and document what each of them knows. And could perhaps put together in some, you know, comprehensive um, documents that. Others coming into the issue could. Um, be uh exposed to and not have to reinvent wheel and, you know, sharing of information. Um, for instance, uh, example, um. Um, the mention of the fifty-six buildings that the town owns. And that going with um, Giacomo's comment that we've got lots of resources. Well, each of those structures and the land around them have um, deed restrictions on them. And as to whether or not those restrictions are binding in perpetuity, uh, could ever be changed. Could ever be changed to a sufficient, um. Uh, profile that it would, you know, address this issue. Uh, for instance, Waveney Park, three hundred plus acres. You could never put a structure on there when you read the deed. Um, so, you know, you might be sitting there looking at this land. Um, but the deed prohibits it and also it's been designated parkland. So you, if you ever used it for anything other than park, you have to take additional acreage and. Um, you know. Put it back into the um, inventory of what the state says we have as a percentage of parkland. So there are all kinds of complex. Um, parts of, of this issue that. The more good heads and people from various aspects of this issue get together. Um, I think it's going to be much more beneficial to, to perhaps come up with. Uh, an aha moment. Um, of um, what might be some possibilities. But right now, everybody's in their little. You know, compartment and um. Not for lack of propriety sake, but just because of the way the things are structured. Not able to um, and haven't been perhaps asked to all sit together and hash this out.
Thank you, Penny.
Penny, that's a great point because I, I'm looking around the room and I, I can't remember the last time we had. Board of Selectmen, Town Council, we have a Board of Finance member here. We have three members of planning and zoning in the room.
Right.
Housing Authority in there. I mean, we have, we've, we've come up with more ideas and plans in literally an hour and, and we started at seven. It's two and a half hours, but it, you know, we'll look back at this meeting and say it, it's a great, great place to start, so. Uh, a lot of great ideas.
So somebody needs to re, re-watch this, this meeting. And um, just take copious notes and then because you don't have to then hash it again. Uh, but look at.
I'm promised to do that.
Yeah.
No, I mean, you know, really, because just for instance, like we've got lots of land and you, you, you mentioned Waveney Park. Well, you can't touch it. So.
Just admit it. You want to build on Waveney, Jack. Sure.
Leave piles count. Just kidding.
Did you want to? Penny, are you done? I'm sorry. I didn't mean to interrupt you.
No, I was just gonna say there are five deeds with the Waveney property.
Except Kevin wants to put the police station.
I tried putting affordable uh, senior housing there, so. So. Anyway.
I, this mic works this fun.
This one. This one?
Yeah, that's fine.
Could you just state your name and?
Danny Man, um, I live on Brushy Ridge. I serve on the housing authority and also on the board of New Canaan neighborhoods. Um, that develop New Ca- Canaan Parish. I, you know, I, I will not try to repeat anything. I tend to be the Pollyanna on the housing authority. I play the foil to Scott many times. I think there's a lot that we can do, a lot that we can learn. Not all knowledge is based here in New Canaan, Connecticut. There are other towns we can learn from, other towns. Fairfield, Fairfield is doing an amazing job. Um, under duress a little bit, but they've come up with some really creative opportunities. I think the more that we can talk with them, the more we can learn. But I think the base question is sort of when the rubber hits the road is, do we have the will and do we have the commitment? To make the financial commitment, the energy commitment, the creative talent that we can put to it. To build affordable housing here. Not just affordable for low and moderate income, but also different types. Arnold has talked about workforce housing. Penny has talked about senior housing. Um, there's a still an increased need for special needs housing. And those all fall under this umbrella where they're governed by the state, governed by the federals. And that all comes into play. And it basically. Gives a place for everyone in this community. And I think that's something, as I said, I'm the Pollyanna. Sorry, Scott. I know he crunches the numbers and I say, but let's look at this. Um, I just hope that we have the will to do it. I think this um, committee is a good start. And we have to look, look for new ideas and listen to everybody that we can. And not think that, oh, it won't work here. Well, maybe it will. Maybe we can find a way. So, thank you.
Thank you. You know, I love that. I, I'm a, I'm a bit of a Pollyanna sometimes too, and I feel like, wow, if we took the lead and did something like what you just described. Could we become like a leader in this and be an example to, to, I don't know, to the state as, as, you know. Um, to look at it creatively, so. I'm kind of in your camp a little bit.
But can I follow up on that? Please, because um. Uh, inherent in that was New Canaan's doing it for New Canaan. And I think there is room to think about regional solutions to problems. Um, the open space issue. Was resolved that way during the Roland administration. Where. It's ten percent of the state is owned by state or land is owned by the state and eleven percent. By municipalities, water companies, foundations and so forth. But it's not eleven percent open space by each community. It's of the entire state. So it has been addressed regionally, not within each municipality. So there may be issues, say by senior housing or um. Um, uh, challenged individuals housing or something that can be addressed regionally. Much more effectively than a certain percentage within one municipality.
Quick follow, it's. What, what you say makes a hundred percent sense. Um, Rhea Weingard here, who's just been fabulous at following the affordable housing um, legislative agenda inside of Connecticut. And for anyone that doesn't follow it, you, you're missing a humongous giant threat that shows up year after year after year. And year after year, it gets boated down. But all it takes is one time for it to be successful and we are just destroyed. I mean, there's really bad stuff up there. And so the whole idea of regional, and there is the Westco group that ends up having a bunch of regional ideas, and there are sane ways that this could all work. Um, and it doesn't actually make any sort of an economic or planning sense for each community to individually have to do something. It really be regional. However, we have to be really careful on the regional side of things. Because you have like fair share housing inside of New Jersey. And one of the things that can come out of a regional is they go ahead and they say, okay, so. New Canaan, you don't have enough affordable housing, therefore we're going to put a tithe on you guys of three, four, five, six million a year. And we're going to give it to someone else for affordable housing. Now, if you go ahead and you look at the tax rolls. The Fairfield County, I think New Canaan is number seven on the tax roll for the state, maybe number six. Of which we get virtually nothing back. So aren't we already giving to affordable housing on the regional side? Do we end up opening up this, this window and saying, oh, it ought to be regional? They go, great, give us another three, four, five million a year. Now, that may be better than us having to do it internally anyway, so maybe that's a better deal, but. Still not quite a deal for all of us. Uh, but there are a whole bunch of, there, there's. Just pointing out, I mean, like Westcog in particular, I mean, the eight thirty J plan. There's a lot of stuff that's been done on all of this. There's a lot of research that goes into it. And the problem is when you run into certain roadblocks that. Some are unintended, or I'll, I'll give the benefit of doubt. More intentional, some are absolutely intentional. And I mean, it's not, it's, it's a feature, not a bug. And they're intending to go ahead and do things that just aren't great, but I mean, look toward the legislative agenda. I mean, Maria, what's the best source for anyone to follow that? It's.
Are you mean what's coming up now?
Yeah. Yeah.
There's four working groups that have. There's a lot of stuff that likely come down.
And 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 as a warning, just like as I first thought when I read the eight thirty G rule, it's like. You're kidding. This, there's no way you really mean this. And it's like, oh, no, 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 it's absolutely what they mean. And all the unintended consequences, a lot of them are intended. And and it's it's scary. The one CT one six nine is strong is a really great source for following that.
Arnold, your hand is raised. Did you have another comment?
Yes, I did. Um, so so two things. Um, you know, when you start to talk about regionalization. I am 100% sure that Greenwich thinks that Stanford should have their affordable housing. And I'm rather sure that the selectmen in Westport thinks Norwalk should have their. Affordable housing, but if you speak to and I have the uh, mayor of Stanford. Uh, she's never gonna be in uh, favor of regionalization. Look, you know, and I've said this in a public forum, I do not believe that the eight thirty G regulation is perfect. On the other hand, it's doing tonight exactly what it. A piece of it is, which is to start the conversation. But I continue to hear that, you know, New Canaan needs 10 units. Um, here's, here's an easy answer. Uh, build those 10 units. Uh, behind Vine Cottage. Right near the heist, uh, right near the town hall. Um, and then you'd certainly have enough units for a moratorium. And, you know, what better than a downtown location? So there is property, there are places and and ways to do it. Um, but you know, the town of New Canaan thinking they could ever raise enough money to. Continue to do this, that that's so hard. Scott, what was the final number at Canaan Parish that between what we borrowed and what we put in as I'll call equity? Uh, was that 70, 65 million?
No, I think I think we're down and it was only, it was only, and this is pre-COVID numbers and pre-escalation. I think it was only.
Right.
But that, but that was also because we didn't have to totally relocate the tenants. We were able to have rent during the time and obviously the land was free.
Right, I mean, part of this is the the tremendous cost. But you know, I've spoken to Scott, Tom O'Day. You know, I would like to see eight thirty G that if the town has made significant step forward. And not even that, you know, they're not under the eight thirty G regulation. Cause look, if you could become the model for Fairfield County. You know, Greenwich has softened. Because they've allowed a bunch of their eight thirty G applications to be approved with some modifications with planning and zoning. So there is a way to work with the evil developers. Uh, to increase your numbers. I don't believe that there's any. Town uh, that will be able to get to the 10%, but that was actually put in. By the anti-affordable housing regulatory people. Who also made it, it was originally 20%. But they figured if they put 30% in, nobody would ever be able to make those numbers. So, again, law was crafted by people who all had their own agendas. Um, to try to get what they wanted out of the regulation and as we know. Uh, it's it's less than perfect for all.
Thanks, Arnold. That's. Usually what happens with thoughts, unfortunately for us. Um, well, I think this was a fruitful discussion. Are there any more comments before we close? I think this was a really helpful discussion. I think that we have. Uh, a roadmap to go forward. Tom and I will watch this and re-watch this and watch it again. And take notes. And um, we will hopefully plan a follow-up meeting in the next. We will get plenty of notice so that the public has plenty of notice. They can weigh in further. I think Tom and I spoke and we're hoping to have, um. Hopefully, maybe a couple of alternatives. Uh, proposed drafts uh, at the next meeting, which will hopefully be in a few weeks, right, Tom?
Yep. That's the hope.
And but I would encourage anybody from the public or anybody who spoke here, if you had written comments, to please forward them to our committee. That would be really helpful as we go forward, or if anybody has anything further they'd like us to consider, please send them to us. We read everything. But I want to end this meeting on a positive note and just. Re-quote Mr. Moynihan that anything is possible in New Canaan. We can do this. We can solve our affordable housing issues. I love that quote, Kevin. So good.
I actually would modify it's possible.
Anything is possible, my friend. Yeah, I'm gonna stick to that. Anyway, so we're adjourned. Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.